Okay, folks, if you could take your seats. We're going to get started with the preliminaries. There's still folks checking in and we won't get into the nitty gritty of our business before folks have had a chance to check in, but I'd like to get started. Good morning. The constable has confirmed that the warrant for this annual town meeting has been properly posted. The town clerk has informed me there is a quorum present. This annual town meeting of the town of Hamilton is now open. Good morning. My name is Bill Baller. I'm the town moderator. Welcome to the April 1st, 2023 annual town meeting, and thank you very much for coming. We have appointed tellers in the event that we need them. We'll start with saying the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone on the table, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as the Lord is with us. We'll start with some general reminders. First, if you're a registered voter in Hamilton, you should have picked up a voting clicker, which looks like this. If you haven't, you should get one now at the check-in. You should have also, in the event we needed, gotten a pink Hamilton voter card. Please turn your cell phone to silent. If you need to take or make a call, please leave the meeting to do so. We welcome non-voters to the town meeting, but do ask that you sit in the visitors' area, which is located in the back-left section of the auditorium, so it'll be easier to know who's able to vote and who is not. So that's up there. So I'd like to thank the student volunteers and school committee or school department employees who helped to set up this town meeting. There's a lot of work that goes into it, so thank you to them. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up front, so that you know who they are. We have Tom McAnaney, K.P. Law, Town Council; Corinne Cale, Town Clerk; Joe Demelwitz, Town Manager; Wendy Markowitz, Finance Director; Sean Farrell, Select Board Chair; Jamie Knutson; Caroline Bolu; Bill Olson; and Tom Myers, Select Board Members; Christina Shank-Hargrove, FinCon Chair; John Perlich; Harry Philip; David Wanger; and John McGrath, FinCon Members. I've asked non-resident town officials and those assisting the Select Board or Finance Committee to be present here, so they may be available to answer questions. Members of the press and video crew have also been allowed to be present. I hope you've brought your copy of the warrant. If you do not, there are some out at the table as you check in. That's the agenda for the meeting prepared by the Select Board. To bring an agenda item before the meeting, I will recognize a member of the sponsoring board, committee, or individual, so they can make a motion. If the motion is seconded, I'll recognize the proponent to speak to you about it. Once they are done, I'll open the discussion. To ensure we have an orderly meeting, if you wish to speak, you must first ask me to recognize you. To save time, please be at one of the microphones. There's one on each side of each aisle. Once you're recognized, please state your name, street address. We'll use the same rules that we use at every town meeting. You'll have three minutes to make comments or ask questions about the motion. When your three minutes is almost up, I'll let you know, so that you can wrap up your comments. If you continue to speak, once your time has elapsed, my obligation to maintain a fair and efficient meeting requires that I move on to the next speaker. I'm going to be the timekeeper, and I'll try to, as I said, three minutes. At about the 30-second mark, I'll raise my hand, so that you know that you should wrap up. Your comments and questions should be within the four corners of the motion. Remember that we are a legislative session for the town of Hamilton. While we can all agree that spirited debate is welcome, we recognize that being cordial and respectful is a priority for the efficiency of the meeting, and that every person who rises to debate a motion has an equal right to be heard. As such, we expect that at this meeting, like all town meetings, people will refrain from making remarks of a personal nature about any town or school official, or any person who is in favor of or against the motion, and will just comment on the merits of the motion. Again, to ensure that the meeting is run efficiently, any comments or questions must be directed to the moderator, rather than any individual or town official. If I deem it appropriate, I may then ask the person making the motion, or another town official, to respond through me to the question. Please, no applause, cheering, booing, or other conduct that will disrupt or delay the meeting. All motions to amend must be submitted to the town clerk in writing. If you need assistance, Town Council can provide you with some assistance. No more than one amendment may be pending at the same time. A vote is first taken on the amendment, and then on the main motion. As I mentioned, when a vote is taken, we'll be using the electronic voting clickers. Joe Demelwitz will demonstrate the use of the clickers in just a moment. In the unlikely event that we have trouble with the new technology, we'll refer to the use of voter cards. I'll ask you to raise your voter cards, and I will then decide visually whether there is the necessary majority, or two-thirds, or other vote. If I am in doubt, or seven voters question the vote immediately after I declare the outcome, I will have the vote counted by the tellers. Mr. Demelwitz, if you want to demonstrate.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. How are you? If you all hold up your clickers, you'll look at them, and you'll see there's a green button. That's yes. The red button is no. I think we're going to have a question here for you. Will the Red Sox win the World Series? This year. Will the Red Sox win the World Series this year? Let's be clear. No? Just have to hit the green button. People can... Can we open up voting?
The voting is over.
Voting is over.
Voting is done.
Okay. Voting is closed, and Sean will show us. See, we have a lot of optimists in the room. That's great.
Okay, thank you. I'll allow about, when it comes time to vote, about 15 seconds for you to put your vote in and decide. Okay. We'll now start going through the articles in the warrant. Article 23, 2023, for 1-2 reports. I recognize Sean Farrell.
Good morning, everyone. I move that the reports of the town officers and committees be received and placed on file. Is there a second?
Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Farrell.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to town meeting. I appreciate you all coming today. I'm going to talk just very briefly about some initiatives we have with the Planning Board, the Select Board, and the Gordon Conwell Seminary. As many of you know, the seminary is putting up the property, some or all of it, for sale in the very near future. We've been working with them to find the biggest and best use for the property. I'm going to give you a little brief timeline, and then I'm going to introduce our consultants, who we've hired to do some work for us, and then going to have Marty Crouch, the Planning Board Chair, speak afterwards. So in May 2022, the seminary announced their intent to sell the property, or a portion of it. In August, members of Select Board and Planning Board and the seminary agreed to form a working group to work towards the future of that property in developing some different zoning from its current zoning. In October, the town and the seminary get together through some town meeting votes, and we engage Barry Abramson and David Gamble to serve as consultants to perform a real estate cost benefit assessment and a physical analysis of the site. We held a handful of public workshops, which hopefully some of you came to. And then, since January, the Planning Board's been working on developing an overlay district for the site. In tandem to that, we're also working on a development agreement with the seminary. And development agreement is kind of covering all the things that aren't in the zoning, so things that we don't want on campus. An example of that would be some type of heavy industry or something that would go in the development agreement. And we're looking at possibly sometime in the middle or end of June, a special town meeting to address this overlay district, so I hope that you pay attention and come to meetings and follow all the discussions and add your input to it to make it the best we can. Now I'd like to introduce David Gamble. He's an architect and urban planner with Gamble Associates, based in Cambridge. Gamble Associates worked with Barry Abramson on this reuse evaluation strategy, and David's practice focuses mainly on community development and neighborhood planning. He's a co-author of Rebuilding the American City, and his forthcoming book, Idea City, is due to come out in June. It's a collection of essays about ways to make the greater Boston region more livable, equitable, and resilient. So, David, it's your show now. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Can you hear me okay? That sounds better. Thank you. I know you have a lot to go over this morning, so thank you for giving us a few minutes to give you an overview of this really remarkable property. So your time is precious, but so is this 103 acres. We don't need to use the polling clickers, but can I just see a show of hands? How many of you are not familiar with the property? Just raise your hand. One, two. Okay, nearly all of you. It's a great site, and we've enjoyed working both with the town and the seminary together, because they were both our clients for this process. So every development has benefits and impacts. The benefits tend to be general and diffuse: more affordable housing, more access to open space. Those are great things. Most people agree on them. The impacts, however, tend to be very specific and local. Oftentimes, abutters bear the brunt of those impacts. So I want to just show you a few slides about these tensions that will emerge as this site evolves, and talk a little bit about those negotiations. So we started, actually, with, I think there were 52 properties that abut this 103 acres at the high point of the county, really remarkable space. Brainstorming, what are some parameters, what are some principles under which development might occur here? We're really trying to find out, what are these overarching principles that would allow you to evaluate different options as development scenarios come forth? We followed that up with a larger public meeting in your community house. Can I see a show of hands of those of you that were at this event? Just raise your hand. Okay, it was a darn good turnout, actually. It was a rainy night. We had over 100 people doing the same thing. What are some principles and some aspirations that you really feel need to be essential as the site evolves? And then, about a month or two later, there's Joe in the foreground. We had a little bit of a summary of that finding. So I am an architect and urban planner. We were looking at the physical characteristics of the site. Barry Abramson was looking at the fiscal site, fiscal characteristics. So we're still in the process of combining these two into a final report, which shall certainly be made available. So what are some of these core values? It may be hard to see from a distance, so I just want to go over them. And these are really synthesis comments that came out of both the public meetings, as well as conversations with the seminary. The first one is, make sure this is a transparent process. Now, that sounds like jargon, but it's really essential. This is, I almost want to say, a once-in-a-century opportunity for the town. This amount of real estate in this location to really bolster the commercial tax base, but also do it in a way that people feel comfortable with. This is a small town, and I think that one of the things that came out of these conversations is to ensure that that character, however you define that, remains. There was concern, natural concern, about gobbling up different parts of the site. You may be familiar with, there's some parcels along Bridge Street that were sold off, and I think people expressed a concern right off the bat, that wouldn't it be unfortunate if this 103 acres got gobbled up piece by piece, and that sense of campus, that sense of cohesion that's really so unique there gets eroded? And I think that is one of these principles that emerged. The net, it's 103 acres, but it really isn't, because there's quite a few slopes, there's a lot of mature tree canopy, there's obviously wetlands, so suddenly the 103 acres gets to be down more like 40 or 50, if you think about where is development likely to occur? So there's a balance between recognizing those landscapes, but also thinking about where could development actually occur in ways that doesn't diminish some of those other principles. And I just wanted to highlight, maybe hard to see here with my pointer, but that, this is a slope up in, near Care Hall, which is the one that has the steeple up on top. And using the topography is a benefit in many cases, because you can build higher, but not really if the lower stories contain parking. So Marty Crouch will talk a little bit about these development agreements that might require certain things. If you want, if a bigger building gets built, maybe it needs to work with the topography so that you don't surround it all with parking. It would be really unfortunate if a lot of development occurred here, and then surface parking, again, removed a lot of that landscape. So there's both a tension, development height, but also an opportunity to work a little bit more carefully and intentionally, using the landscape to hide and to make things like parking less obvious. Lot of wetlands around the entirety of the site. That's an asset. There's distances that one has to stay away from it, so there was a strong intentionality for sustainability. And development needs to reflect those sensibilities, and I do think that's another one of these requirements that the town can place on development, make sure it's highly sustainable. There were ambitions to ensure public access. So the trails, I've been up there, there's horses, runners, bikers, everything. That's a goal of the community, but it's also a tension, because some land uses might try to restrict public access. If it's, let's say, a laboratory, and that's another tension to negotiate around the site's transformation. There are some great buildings. The Retreat House, the oldest building on the property, only 14,000 square feet, not a huge building, but has a remarkable presence on the site. And I know one of the development agreements will try to be sensitive to the historic character of the building. Some of them are mid-century. I also think those, that's an attractive era, but other ones are quite old. This Retreat House and Pilgrim Hall are maybe two of the oldest ones. Those are legacy buildings from last century. And then there are, whether or not you know it, because they're a little bit tucked in the back on the south side of the site, are six dormitories of about 200,000 square feet. There's, these were built in the 80s here, 40,000, 50,000 square feet each. So there is an opportunity here to keep those. They need to be made more accessible. They lack elevators. There's some code issues, but it's pretty easy to imagine trying to get a little bit more housing density in these existing buildings without just tearing them down. And then lastly, there is a portion of the campus that most of you are familiar with that's largely flat, fairly open. It's about eight to 12 acres, depending upon where you draw that line. It is also buffered a great deal from the surrounding neighborhoods by the existing canopy, a little bit less so in Woodbury, but largely open. This is most likely to be the area that would be developed first because of those conditions. So balancing development with maintaining these principles really have to be part of the conversation moving forward. And I don't want you to think that this is the final conversation. It's actually a launching point to more work that the Planning Board will do moving forward. So again, this may be a little bit hard to see from a distance, but I just wanted to orient you. I twisted, I rotated the map, so north is actually to the right, just to fit. And here you're seeing those properties along Bridge Street. You know, there's a lot of canopy that's been cut down to get buildings in there, so already one has to be careful about, not just views from the site, but views of the site from the surroundings. And so I think there was concern about having that happen more in the periphery. So this is the Care Hall that I mentioned previously. Here's Bridge Street, Essex, Woodbury. So there's the library, academic center, and chapel. Those, that's about 90,000 square feet. Sorry to throw a lot of numbers at you, but here's Care Hall, that's around 75,000. So already on the site, there's 400,000 square feet of development, which is actually, sounds like a big number, but it's dispersed across 14 buildings. So these up here, that's around 160,000 square feet now, two to three stories. Care Hall is actually four in a couple of spots. Here are the, here's the Pilgrim House, the Retreat House, and then the clusters of residential. And then the red lines are just the circulation roads going through the site. If we look at it just in figure ground, so again, here are the buildings up top. There is a sewer system that's running below grade that comes here to the treatment facility, and then the lower portion, again, we left out the abutters. We didn't take you away. We're just left it off this map to only concentrate on the campus. So remember, I said there was concern about gobbling things up, and that is true, but the landscape itself, the continuity of the tree canopy, the wetlands, the grassy areas, the roads, that actually forms the network that ties different portions together. And one of our observations is, actually, it may not be one campus, but it might actually be three. That is to say, up in Care Hall and around the library, the chapel, and the academic center, it is separated visually and topographically from the rest of it. We're calling this upper campus. That's around 14 acres. There's a central portion, which is what I just showed you, which was the Frisbee Golf Area. That's around eight to 10, depending upon where one draws the line. And then we aggregated together the six residential buildings as kind of a lower campus, topographically, but also just for simplicity's sake. So imagine 14 acres, the central campus is around 12, and then the lower campus, if you put the three portions together, is around 11. So 14, 12, 11, it's just under 40 acres out of 100. That's most likely to be developed. And even within that definition, you know, there are certain areas like here that are quite steep and have a great deal of canopy, so I don't want you to leave here knowing that, oh my God, they're going to develop 40 acres. But that is the outside parameter under which development might occur, and a lot of what will get built is actually negotiated through the development agreement. So we're proposing to actually think of this as a series of clusters. At one of the public meetings, a concern was raised, well, now you might get three different development entities working on the project. That's a good thing, because relying on a single land use might actually be vulnerable to economic fluctuations. So it's possible that the upper campus becomes a place of 55 and over housing, that the middle campus could be a site for commercial development, labs, for example. A lot of people talked favorably about New England Biolabs. I went out there, I got a tour, I was blown away. That's 200,000 square feet of both of those buildings, and they're situated pretty well into the property. So where different land uses land and how that happens is going to be market determined. The seminary, for their role, actually want to increase flexibility for development opportunity, while at the same time, the town wants to make sure that it's done in a way that's reflective of those principles. So looking just a little bit closely, even at the upper campus, again, here's Brown's Hill, it's where the reservoir is, so can't be built upon there either. Here's the chapel. Somewhat idiosyncratic layouts. They were built for academic space, but possibly reusable. We think Care Hall's quite handsome. The back two wings are a little compromised in their dimensionality, but, so there's even within the upper campus, a couple different portions. And the middle campus, again, here are the two historic buildings defined by the Ring Road. There is a pathway here, there's actually a good deal of canopy and topographic change there, and then within the lower campus. Now, these buildings would require some investment. As I said, they need stair towers, they need elevators, they need code updates, but already there, and, you know, I think the future of town and city development isn't about just demolishing everything you have. There's quite a lot of embodied energy in these buildings, and it makes sense, actually, to think about their reuse for residential. And we, actually, there was a former proposal that you may be familiar with, that was suggesting this darker blue color was a new core that had the elevator and could connect to those, this is buildings A and B, and C and D, and then there's a couple more. So it's a great opportunity. I do think the town is actually able to drive a lot of these conversations through this public process. We have been working with the Planning Board in parallel. If you think about it like a relay race, we've had a baton, we've been trying to time the overlap between them. And with that, I'm going to ask Marty Crouch to come up and talk a little bit about that relationship between our work and the Planning Board's work.
Thank you very much, David. Is this microphone? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
As Chair of the Planning Board, I want to thank Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary representatives for their contribution to the employment of David Gamble and Barry Abramson, as well as their commitment to work with the town to develop an overlay district for the campus. The reuse initiative for the campus, as David said, presents a unique opportunity for the town. The Planning Board is working to develop an overlay district that the town will eventually approve, and we are committed to developing such an overlay district, such that the town will enthusiastically endorse it. And David Gamble and Barry Abramson have provided us with the springboard for drafting that overlay district. The Planning Board has taken a number of steps to advance the reuse initiative, and the handout that you have received highlights that work. The Planning Board will work toward the bylaw such that it will address the needs of the town, the needs of the seminary, and balance environmental, social, and fiscal benefits. I want you to know that the Planning Board is equipped to undertake the task before it, and I want to take this opportunity to let you know who the members of the Planning Board are. The clerk of the Planning Board is Amal Dolquist. He has 50 years' experience as an architect and 25 years' experience as Chair of various design review boards in Simsberry, Connecticut. Bill Wheaton is a professor of meritus at MIT specializing in real estate economics. Rick Mitchell is our longest-serving Planning Board member, and he is president of the Hamilton Development Corporation. Jonathan Poor is the owner of an interdisciplinary design firm providing architect services that, and specifically tying projects to the built-in natural environment. Pat Norton, who is running for an open seat on the Planning Board, is an engineer and a project manager who's presently employed at New England Biolabs. Our newest member, Beth Herr, has a business background, and our newest associate member is Matt Hamill, who is an attorney specializing in municipal law. And at this point, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Richard Boroff for his service on the Planning Board as his term expires on April 6. Speaking for the entire Board, I encourage you to attend our Planning Board meetings via Zoom, ask questions, and voice your concerns and ideas about the draft development agreement. It's only from listening to you that we can address your concerns and incorporate them in the draft overlay district. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. All right. Can you hear me now? All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, David. Thank you, Marty. As Marty kind of mentioned there, participation is going to be really key here.
All right, can you hear me now? All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, David. Thank you, Marnie. As Marnie kind of mentioned there, participation is going to be really key here. I know there's about 7,000 and change people in town. Everyone is not here, but you are, and I appreciate that. But please tell your neighbors and the folks that weren't here, they may have concerns about this development, okay? Have them come to public meetings. If you're not sure when these planning board meetings are, selectmen meetings, please go to the town website, sign up for alerts for agendas and meetings, and look at the calendar. Be involved. It really helps us move the process forward, and we really want to hear from all of you. At this point in time, I'm going to introduce the Chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee, former selectman and future selectman, Bill Wilson.
All right, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town officials, Hamilton residents. As Sean said, my name is Bill Wilson, longtime resident of Hamilton, prior selectman, prior school board member, possibly future selectman, unless there's a large writing campaign, but we'll go from there. What a great segue. I don't know if that was planned, as we talked about land use. We talked about a beautiful property in Hamilton. What do we need to make sure we make good decisions and have procedures and a format in place when these come to our communities? And how do we make those decisions? Well, we need a master plan. So really, what I'm here to talk to you about, it's really a public service announcement. There's a briefing in the back. I encourage everyone to take it. Gets into a little more detail, talks about next steps. But I just want to let you know that Hamilton is currently updating their master plan. We do have a plan. It was created in 2004, so it's a bit dated. Funds have been appropriated. You know, we've hired a consultant, Barrett Management Group, excuse me. And we began work. So I don't, I think we have some pages. If you want to go back to the group slide. There you go. So first thing we did out of the gate was put a team together. I won't read all the names and such, but there's 12 people there. And it's kind of a hub and spoke process here where we've gathered and we're reaching out. Hopefully, you've heard from these members. And we're organizing a lot of community activity. Because our first and primary objective, if you will, is community engagement. Because the master plan really does provide guidance documents for Hamilton's long-term growth and development. It protects the environment and creates a framework, as I mentioned, for future policy decisions aimed at strengthening and preserving our local identity. You know, I think the consultant earlier mentioned balanced development and our identity. That's perfect. We need to do that. Let's set stuff up through a master plan. So the committee was created. I won't name everybody, but I want to thank them. Really, a very active group. We meet regularly and go through all our initiatives. The consultants have been great. Judy, Tyler, Carly have been great. I don't know that they're here. You will have an opportunity to meet them at our next readout, which is in the middle of May. We'll talk about that in a little bit. And I'd be amiss if I didn't recognize the support from the town, from the select board, from Patrick Refit, Director of Planning. He's been outstanding. He really is the glue and keeps us moving through the process. So as I mentioned on the next slide, in one of the first meetings, the team got together. What are we going to do? How are we going to move this needle? And somebody made the recommendation, and it really stuck, is we need to protect, you know, what should we provide to the community and how do we grow? Was that up there? No, did I miss it? I didn't do the slide, sorry. There we go. So that was our founding principles, if you will, you know, that we drive every meeting, every public meeting that we have as we get groups together. And we have had teams get together. Progress to date, we've had two large community meetings. Good turnout. Anybody who's here and attended them, I appreciate your input. We learned a lot from that. We've had a lot of smaller initiatives and meetings where our consultants really hosted those. And we got together with community members of special interest groups. We got together with committees. We got together with town leadership, town staff, and really gleaned a lot of good information. We also did a community-wide survey. So if you haven't taken that, you'll drive into the Master Plan Steering website and try to take that survey because community engagement is really ongoing. We have shifted at this point into kind of what I'll call our second phase, which is inventory and assessment. We are currently reviewing documentation from our town that our consultants have really spent weeks and weeks putting together. A lot of really good data there. Yeah, I was shocked. I learned a lot of facts and stats about the community. I've seen some trends. I've seen some really cool maps that I didn't know about. And you'll have an opportunity to see all of that on May 17th. So mark your calendars for that. But quickly, you know, what's entailed in this document is really eight chapters. And I'll just read them quickly. Land use is number one. And as we've been talking about, I think that's foundational to any plan, right? Because the land is the ware of everything we want to do, no matter what we're talking about. So that's our number one, and we're drilling through it. Equally as important are the other seven. We have transportation, natural resources, cultural and historic resources, open space and recreation, housing and residential development, economic development, community services, and facilities. So all important areas. I know we have a lot of great things in Hamilton, in this community, to preserve. We know that and realize that there are many challenges facing Hamilton, including town finances, you know, the spend to our tax rate, maintaining essential services, protecting water sources, protecting the environment, addressing state requirements, and quality of life issues. Together, you know, with a well-thought-out master plan, we can address all of that and protect, provide, and grow. So explore, you know, what we're doing. Participate. We'd love your help. If, you know, go to the website, pull the briefing that's at the end table today that has a QR code that you can click with your phone and register for our meeting on the 17th. It's a Zoom call at 7:00 o'clock at night. So we tried to make it at a time where most people are available. But I encourage everybody to reach out to either the website, the QR code, or call me direct. You know, my email address is right on the website as well. You know, we want to hear from you because the master plan is really created by the community and for the community. And by doing that, we'll assure that everything you do in the future represents the wants of the community. So with that, that's all I had.
Thank you. We have a pending motion to accept town reports. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. So with your clickers, if you're in favor of accepting the town reports, hit the green button, and if you're against, you hit the red button. So voting is open now. Voting is now closed. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and I so declare. Article 1-3, Articles for Consent Motion. I will now read the list of articles to be taken up and voted on as one motion. If you want to ask questions or make comments on an article, shout out "hold" as the list is read. Any article that is held will be deleted from the consent motion and taken up and considered according to its place on the warrant. The articles on the consent motion are Articles 2-1, 2-6, 2-7, 2-8, 2-9, 2-11, 2-12, and 3-2. I recognize Bill Wilson.
I move that the articles included on the List of Articles for Consent Motion for this 2023 Annual Town Meeting, a copy of which has been delivered to the town clerk to be filed with the minutes of this meeting, be approved by one vote. Each motion to be deemed a separate action under the warrant, article having the same corresponding number. Is there a second? As we typically do at every meeting, we seek to include a number of routine but necessary articles that are not controversial in one consent motion. This allows us to limit the duration of the meeting so that we can give more time to issues that are more likely to engender debate.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, we can move to a vote on the consent motion. To reprise, the articles on the consent motion are Articles 2-1, 2-6, 2-7, 2-8, 2-9, 2-11, 2-12, and 3-2. Voting is now open. Oh, wait. We're all set? Okay. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and I so declare. Just give me a moment to update. Okay. Article 2-2, Prior Year Bills. This will require a 4/5th vote. I recognize Christina Shankar-Grove.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $900 from DPW Consultative Services Account and $675.01 from Finance Department Consultative Services Account to pay for unpaid bills for Vol Trek, O'Connell Plumbing, and Carousel Industries, respectively.
Is there a second? Ms. Christina Shankar-Grove.
These are a few bills that are for services that were provided within the prior fiscal year but were submitted after the close. And so we just need to have a specific vote to have them paid. These are services that were provided and not disputed. And so we have brought them to you for this vote.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. Again, this requires a 4/5th vote. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The ayes have it, more than a 4/5th vote. The motion passes, and I so declare. Article 2-3, General Town Departmental Appropriations. This is our annual general town and school omnibus appropriations article. I recognize Eric Tracy, Superintendent of Schools, to report on the school district budget.
Good morning, everyone. The big boss at home said, make sure you don't use your outdoor voice all day. Mr. Moderator, thank you for the opportunity to address the citizens of Hamilton. I would be remiss if I did not thank our families, students, educators, and administrators for their work to bring school back out of COVID to normal. Also, I would like to thank our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Vinnie Leoni, who spends more than countless hours developing and adjusting the budget throughout the four- or five-month process that begins in late October. I'd also like to thank members of the school committee, our town manager, members of the select board, members of the finance board, and many others who have had a hand in working to present a fiscally responsible budget to you today. The overall net increase of the school budget this year is 2.66%. The school district and boards have continued to improve transparency through many joint meetings and boards, chairpersons, so that everyone's needs were met and understood as best as possible. Next slide, please. There are a number of items to highlight within the FY '24 budget that has been approved by the school committee. While we have still continued to have more than 20 open positions throughout the school year, we have made appropriate adjustments where we can. In this next year's budget, we have reduced staff by 11.68 FTEs, which each FTE is basically one person. So 11 and some part-time people. Overall payroll increase of only $158,000 or 0.65%. This is traditionally averaged 4.08% over the prior five-year period. This budget also returned $773,000 to the towns for the second year in a row. It also allows for a $1.698 million transfer to be moved to the stabilization fund for the athletic facilities improvement project. It allows for $300,000 to repair and replace the high school auditorium lights and electrical. What you see here today is rented. We had to rent speakers today to make sure the meeting was able to happen. Last year, we ran extension cords from every segment of this building just to get, make sure the town meeting ran efficiently and effectively. There's $275,000 for smart board replacements across the district. And those are digital displays that you see in most of our classrooms. Most of them are approximately 10 years old, and a number of them, a large number of them, are inoperable. It's also $126,000 to update and upgrade the Buca Gym auditorium and PA system. If you've been in the Buca Gym and auditorium, it's just like day one. And if you've ever been during the school day, they don't have a PA system that goes across the building. For me, that's a personal safety thing. I think it's important to do. There's also $15,000 set aside for a study of the high school science labs. And then there's some heavy-duty increases. Out-of-district transportation, which is transportation that is used to take students who are not able to participate in our district to private, usually special ed schools. This number has gone up $448,000 for next year. Out-of-district tuition, the cost that we pay these schools for kids who are not able to be in our district, is increasing $336,000. And I'll explain why in a little bit, a little bit further into the presentation. And just like you and me, our utilities continue to rise. Right now, we're looking at an increase of approximately $77,000. The school committee has worked for the past two years that I've been superintendent. We have worked to reduce the athletic user fee for families. As you know, you go back three years ago, they were out of control. They were tough for some families, which really keeps some kids out of participating in athletics and events. With this budget, we're moving from 45% to 50%, so we'll tend to cover half of those costs and continue to look for ways to reduce those costs. This budget also incorporates an assessment shift of $285,000 towards Hamilton. And that shift is because of the number of kids in each community. I'll describe it a little bit further in the next slide, but the number of kids in the community determines the percentage of the assessment that each community pays. Next slide. This slide represents a breakdown of the budget along with the assessments for each community. So how do we determine the assessment? To begin the process, we use the total operating expenditure and then add the total debt services, so debts that we've incurred previously. Once those are added together, we subtract the offsets and the rest... Once those are added together, we subtract the offsets and the revenues, monies that we take in. Offsets and revenues can include monies like state aid, which we call Chapter 70 money, school choice revenues, and special education revenues. This calculation gives us an overall assessment for the two towns of $34,867,851. Then, we determine the assessment and portionment for each of the towns based on a three-year average calculation of the number of students in each community who attend our schools. This gives us the percent of the overall amount that is assessed to each community. This year, the percent of the total for Hamilton is 66.22% of the budget, which is up from FY23, which was, I believe, 65.4%. It is important to note that the assessment shift towards Hamilton this year adds approximately 1.25% to the Hamilton assessment. So when you look at the overall number coming to Hamilton, $285,000 approximately is just because of the shift in number of students when you look at that calculation on the assessment. Next slide, please. Here's a more detailed look at the FY24 budget. There are some important things to note. As mentioned earlier, we had another difficult year trying to fill positions. Overall, again, we had at times 20 positions across the district. This left us with approximately $3.2 million left over in the FY22 budget in excess and deficiency. We intend to deploy these funds to some much-needed capital projects. I highlighted a few of them earlier, but I want to be really clear on some of them. $1.698 million transfer into the stabilization fund that was approved in October of '22 at town meeting. As we've consistently stated, the school committee intends to use this money for the athletic facilities improvement project that you'll hear about more detailed later in the morning. $300,000 to replace and repair electrical and lighting issues in this auditorium. I talked to you a little bit about what we did last year and what we've had to do this year to make sure this meeting could happen. And then last year, we started a commitment towards replacing our digital displays in our classrooms, many of which are more than 10 years old and inoperable. This $275,000 is intended to continue replacements across all schools. There's $127,000 intended to be used to update and repair the Buca Combination Gym Auditorium while adding a much-needed PA system. And then that $773,000 represents the money that will go back to the towns. The next slide, Slide 5, is a simplification of the previous slide. It really just shows the breakout in a little more simplistic way. I want to take a moment to be really clear about the transfer of the stabilization fund. Next slide, please. A stabilization fund was approved on October 1st, 2022, special town meeting. Within this budget for FY24 is a transfer from the FY22 budget excess and deficiency to the stabilization fund in the amount of approximately $1.7 million, $1.698 million. And again, we intend to use this money to reduce the cost of the athletic facilities improvement project that we will discuss later on in the meeting. Next slide. This chart behind me represents the budget as we reported to the Mass Department of Education. It shows gross increase of the district budget at 2.83%. As you can see, the overall assessment for Hamilton is an increase of 3.91% over last year, some of which is due to the students attending school versus Wyndham. Next slide. I want to take a moment to zoom in just a little bit on this slide. These red arrows denote the reductions we have made across our budget that allow us to bring fiscally responsible budget to this community. Principals and directors were asked to submit budgets that had no increase, and they followed through. Clearly, those reductions didn't appear everywhere, as some are connected to mandatory increases that are out of our control. One such mandated increase came from the state in the amount of 14% for out-of-district placements. This annual increase has usually averaged 1.8 to 2% over the last 10 years. This huge increase has forced an unanticipated increase in the budget of approximately $370,000. I also want to note that as part of a subcommittee of the local superintendents, the North Shore Superintendents Roundtable, that met with senators and representatives yesterday at a legislative luncheon to discuss issues like this, 14% surprises for districts that can't really handle those types of increases along the way. So it's not only our system that's seeing this, it's a $92 million problem across the state of Massachusetts that's going to impact next year's budget. We have been given some information that in the government's budget, they are trying to figure out how to manage that. But once you increase it, it doesn't go away. So that's our generalized concern for our superintendents. Transportation is also an area of increase that is difficult to anticipate. It changes constantly throughout a school year. You may start the school year transporting 20 kids, and by the time you get to the middle, it could be 25. By the time you get to the end, it could be 19. It just depends on how many kids are with you and where they're being transported to. Next slide. There are currently four projects that represent previously approved and incurred debt to the towns in the amount of $596,427, of which Hamilton's portion, based on the same assessment percentage, is $394,954, an increase of $21,069 over last year. Next slide, please. This slide represents the year-over-year average for five years for the town of Hamilton. Our initial budget in November, which represented a rollover of current services plus special education increases back in November, was 5.5%. And this would have represented a 6.94% increase to Hamilton compared to last year. Over the few months of the budget process, the school committee, in conjunction with feedback from the town boards, reduced the initial amount, net increase, to a net increase of 2.66%, which represents a $983,000 reduction from the original amount. Next slide, please. I'm proud to represent the students, families, staff, and faculty of the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District. We have picked up the torch that's been lying on the ground for at least the last three to five years by focusing on two main strategies. The development of stronger schools academically and the improvement and updates in our school facilities. These strategies will help us to simultaneously bring students and families back to our schools, build stronger communities, and improve the values of properties within while continuing to create great places and spaces for our kids to learn, to play, and to grow. As you will see later on in this presentation, the school budget is just one of a number of items we are working on to accomplish on behalf of our children. Our schools can no longer be looked at as the albatross in the neck of our towns. It is important for all of us to come together as one to overcome the clear obstacles coming our way so that the communities can remain strong, up-to-date, and competitive in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. I now recognize Joe Demelwitz, Town Manager, to report on the town budget.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. How are you? It's a tough act to fall. Thanks, Eric. So really quickly, I'd like to say, start off by thanking the people that helped put this budget proposal together. Select Board, the Finance Advisory Committee, but particularly your department heads have worked since October to figure out ways to continue to deliver the services the residents in town expect and try to reduce or minimize the impact that it would have on your tax rate. We're able to, again, by working with Eric and Vinnie and the school district, we are able to, again, keep below a two-and-a-half override, which is great because every year it gets a little tougher. But we're there again this year. I want to also introduce our new finance director, Wendy Markowitz. Wendy just started with us, that's why we don't have a nameplate for her. She started about two weeks ago. And just to make sure that I don't mess up, I brought our old finance director, Alex McGee, back. He's sitting up front and will probably be called upon shortly to help. Okay, so some high points about the budget. The fiscal year 2024 budget proposal is for $39,747,906 in total spending for the town and the schools. This does represent a total increase of about $3,312,000. But a big part of that, more than half of it, is due to a large increase in what we're spending on capital improvements this year. So some of that will be voted in this article and some of it will be voted in another article. The split between the town and schools includes an increase in the regional school district assessment of $854,000. And the total town increase is $2.4 million. But again, if you separate out the $1.6 million for capital, it's really only an $802,000 increase for the town operating costs. Next slide. By general business area, the budget for general town government is $22,378,699. The public safety department is $3,921,655. This was our largest increase, but that had a lot to do with some reorganization that we did and the way we stored the money. We had negotiated union contracts to the unions, and so the contracts went up. The Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District, as you just heard, the operating budget, there is $23 million, our share of it, is $23,89,492. The Essex-North Shore Ag and Tech School actually decreased. This was a result of fewer students going there. So that number is only $307,458 this year. Department of Public Works is $2330,985. Health and Human Services Department was $370,192. As a percent, this looks like a large increase, but it's only because those budgets are so small. Just a little bit of increase there makes it look like a large percent. Culture and Recreation was a budget of $1,157,859. And the unclassified section of the budget, which includes the capital, was a total of $4,434,942. That also includes things like unemployment, insurance, things that we have to pay, that we can't avoid. I'm going to call Alex up and let him earn some of his consultants' pay by going over the next couple of slides.
All right. Good morning. So this is just a breakdown by category. It shows the sort of exact same slide that we were just looking at, but in a graphical representation. You'll see that the largest chunk is the regional school district and then sort of broken out among other categories. Next slide. Again, this is a table representation of the same thing. You'll see the column highlighted in yellow for FY24 showcases the planned expenditures for the fiscal year that's upcoming. Across the very bottom shows our total without capital, sort of to represent the operating costs. You'll see there's a 4.62% increase in general town expenditures sort of across the board. All right, so this is our revenue. So you can see this pie is very blue, and that is because almost all of our revenue here comes from tax, from our tax levy. So it's about 97% comes from some sort of local source, 2 and 3/4% comes from state aid, the rest is all sourced locally. So how we're planning on funding all the expenses this year, $33,797,000 of it is coming from a tax levy. Other available funds, so this is from various offsets and other internal sort of... So we charge some of our expenditures to the water enterprise, so some of it will come from there. $57,000 will come from free cash, $2.18 million from local receipts, those are sort of, you know, motor vehicle excise, building permits, that sort of thing. And then just over a million in state aid. And that number is subject to potentially change a little bit based on what happens with the budgets at the State House. Next slide. Again, this is that same representation, just in table form. You'll also notice down at the bottom, it shows how we plan on funding capital. You'll see that some money is planned to be spent out of ARPA on capital this year. And then there's sort of capital stabilization, we'll get to that. We're looking to procure a new fire truck. And so, and then just under $1.1 million in free cash towards our capital program. Next slide. So you see, this is our excess levy capacity. Across the bottom, that is, represents, you know, we're up to our two-and-a-half limit for prop two-and-a-half. We're projecting $84,000 in excess levy capacity next year. This is a struggle every year as goods and services get more expensive. It is very difficult to maintain our revenue sources just at 2.5%. So like Joe did, I'd like to thank all of the department heads here. It's been a, it was a lot to get everything together for budget season. But that's pretty much it. Next slide. All right. Questions?
Thank you. I'll now read each appropriation, and for any item a voter would like to discuss separately, call out, hold. $2,378,699 for general town government. $3,921,655 for public safety. $23,894,92 for Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District. $307,458 for Essex-North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District. $2,330,985 for Department of Public Works. $370,192 for Health and Human Services. $1,157,859 for Culture and Recreation. $3,744,974 for unclassified. And the total is $37,301,315. I recognize John Prelage.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sums read by the moderator for schools and other town expenses to set forth in the 2024 fiscal year budget in Appendix B of the 2023 appendix book and Appendix C of the 2023 appendix book, with the corrections read by the moderator accepting those items held.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Good morning, everyone. The FinCom commentary that came with the warrant goes into a lot of detail on why FinCom unanimously supports the proposed budget. Not going to rehash everything that's in there, but I want to highlight a few items on both the town and the school side. As has been discussed, the overall town and school budget increases by about 9% over last year, which is a really big number. But almost half of this came from one-time town capital costs that are included in other articles, like the fire truck in Article 2-5 and the other items in 2-4. As these are one-time costs, it'll be funded through various means such as free cash, existing capital stabilization funds, and even ARPA funds, there's no actual effect on the tax rate. So the effective budgetary effect on the tax rate is much lower than this 9%. So if you net out this capital, the operational increase on the town side is about 6.3%, which is almost entirely driven by increased personnel expenses, which grew at a rate of about 7% and make up almost 64% of the budget. Beyond these personnel costs, the other operational costs were actually flat year-over-year, with the exception of some increased debt service costs. On the school side, the assessment increased by about 3.9%. But there are certain nuances to this that I want to point out. As Superintendent Tracy discussed, about a third of this increase is actually due to the shift in enrollment from Wyndham to Hamilton. This is the fourth year in a row we've had shift from Wyndham to Hamilton, although it is a slightly lower rate than it was last year. It's not clear whether it's going to shift back towards Wyndham at some point in time like it did for a number of years last decade, but it does bear watching for future budgets. Superintendent Tracy also did a great job of explaining the use of the 3.2 million in E&amp;D funds. Most of that's being used for very vital capital projects, namely the school athletic fields project, as well as the other things that Superintendent Tracy mentioned. Regarding the almost $800,000 that's effectively given back to the towns, what this really does is actually decreases the assessment to the town and reduces the operational cost for this year. Now, this is great for this year and is great for our tax rate, but it should be noted that this does understate the actual spending level from the school district. You can't rely on E&amp;D every year, so if nothing else changes, and there's no E&amp;D in a future year, we're going to see increased expenses on the school side. we're going to see increased expenses on the school side. It should be definitely noted that the school district did a great job of keeping their, the increase of their budget to a very reasonable level this year. Superintendent Tracy talked about, there was a reduction in headcount to accomplish this, and it was generally restructuring, eliminating open positions, so there's no decrease in level of service. I also want to point out that upon request, the school district made several rounds of cuts to their initial budget requests to avoid probably two-and-a-half overrides for both towns. Hats off to Superintendent Tracy, Finance Director Vincent Leone, and the school committee for driving this process. So on the one hand, when looking at this budget in very challenging economic times, both the town and the school spending were definitely mindful of controlling their spending, while providing level services and our tax rate is only expected to increase by about twenty-six cents. Therefore, we unanimously recommend approval of this budget. But as a word of caution, we still grew at rates that were above two-and-a-half percent. Since going forward, we do not have any unused levy capacity in the town. And if you grow at rates that are substantially above this level, it's really going to be very hard to avoid prop two-and-a-half overrides in the near future, unless there's additional non-tax revenue to support it. However, our town manager, department head, school officials, and the school committee should all be commended on the flexibility and collaboration they had through the countless hours they spent developing this budget. As will be highlighted later in this meeting, we'll continue to face difficult decisions and trade-offs, so it's important that we work together to find creative and efficient solutions in our budgeting and to really prioritize capital spending, not only on what projects we try to tackle, but also the level of funding that we can actually dedicate to each of these projects. We simply need to stretch the dollars provided by the taxpayers as far as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prelage. Some of you may have noticed that there's a difference between the bottom-line number that I read and the bottom-line number shown on this slide. Mr. Demelwitz is going to explain the difference.
Sorry about that. This, the slide is from an earlier version. The number that was read by the moderator and by Mr. Prelage was thirty-seven million, three hundred one thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars, and that is the number we're asking you to vote on. The difference between that number and the number on the screen is three hundred fifty thousand dollars of the capital expenses being paid out of ARPA, which is authorized by the select board, so it doesn't need a vote at town meeting. So we took it out of the presentation here today, although we will still spend that money on sidewalks and other things that the select board is going to approve. So I apologize for the discrepancy, but thirty-seven million, three hundred one thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars is the total number you're being asked to vote on. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments?
Good morning. I'm Phil Sterns, 175 Linden Street. And I just want to thank everybody also for all the effort that went into avoiding an override this year. I'm sure it was a ton of work, and I want to thank the school committee and the school administration for all the efforts that they put in the same way to keep their budget as low as they did. I do have one question concerning the schools. My understanding is right now that the OPEB, which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits Budget, the liability that's unfunded that the school district has right now is over thirty-nine million dollars. Hamilton is responsible for two-thirds of this, as you saw earlier. So that's about twenty-six million dollars that we actually owe to help pay for the retirement and insurance benefits of school employees past, present, and future. Now, in 2023, I noticed in the school budget, they did a very good job of trying to address this by allocating over two million dollars, two million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars toward the OPEB trust fund that they've established. And there was a hundred thousand dollars allocated in 2022, which comes to a total of two million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, at least in those two years that was allocated. The current balance of that OPEB trust fund is only one million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. So there's a million, one hundred thousand dollars on the budgets that show was allocated that isn't in the trust fund now. So I have two questions. The first one is, what happened to that funding? I imagine it was used somewhere else, but this OPEB liability doesn't go away. And the second question is, the 2024 allocation is only two hundred thousand dollars. So that's a ninety percent decrease from what was allocated last year. And again, how are we ever going to meet this obligation if we're not putting money away for it?
Someone from the school committee want to address that?
Thank you. The OPEB funding has continuously been an issue for years and years. And last year, the school committee made a determination to move two-point-two million of excess deficiency into that fund to begin to fund the liability. For those of you who don't know, OPEB is for benefits of retirees. Once they retire, we are still paying for their health benefits. Generally, that, it's around health and medical benefits. And that goes off, it basically continues to grow each year as people retire from the system. So we have a responsibility to manage that. We do manage it for, it's about a one-point-one million dollars within the school budget. And then I think three years ago, before my time, the school committee voted to continuously add fifty thousand dollars to the amount that would be placed into the OPEB fund each year. So for last year, it was a hundred thousand. Outside of the two-point-two million, there was another hundred thousand put in. This year, a hundred and fifty thousand. And in the FY twenty-four budget, you'll see another two-hundred thousand dollar increase, and we'll continue to do that to try to meet that long-term liability.
Thank you.
Good morning. Jack Howke, Newton Street. I do not come here to discuss numbers. I come here to discuss people. And I think the rightful applause we gave to our school board was wonderful. But we missed one person, and that's our town manager. Let me tell you, I've been fairly involved with him, and we have an outstanding town manager. He is providing something which I hope all of you are aware of, and that is a twice-monthly report, which lists not numbers, but it lists what's actually going on in our town government. I've never seen that before. He brought it to our town. He brings a lot, much more. So for Joe.
Thank you, Jack. Where do I send the check?
Good morning. Stephen Porter, eighteen Cunningham Drive. I do like people, but I'm going to have a numbers question. It's going to be to the school, I believe. But in the budget, I just wanted to hear what the subsidy or the contribution from the state is, you know, aggregate for Hamilton and Wenham. So thank you.
Something from the schools want to address that?
Always a difficult question because it involves a number of areas. We generally get what's called Chapter Seventy-eight, which is, I believe, you're talking about right now, which is, I believe, in this current year, three-point-nine million dollars that comes from the state. And there is, if you ever want to spend some interesting time, there is a fascinating calculation. Senator Tar can attest to that, that no one can figure out, but it works. But it's, this year, three-point-nine million. I think it's projected to go up another hundred thousand. Next year, I think ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and some change. We also get monies from the state for Medicaid reimbursements for some of our kids that are out of district or need special medical attention. We get reimbursements for some of our transportation costs, but not all, depending on how they fit into a particular claiming rate. And then some of our out-of-district placements as well. So those, those monies do, those are the revenues and offsets I discussed earlier. So they total this year right around nine million dollars. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please be at the, if you can, the microphone when you're ready to speak.
Eric Conde, 115 Linden Street. I have a question on the debt the school district has incurred, or the town in debt. No, just the school district. Once an obligation has been incurred, does it remain that the balance between Hamilton and Wenham constant going forward, no matter how enrollment shifts? Or is, if prior obligations have paid, it shifts with enrollment? Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, quick question. Bill Wilson, 36 Holland Street, Hamilton. We talked about enrollment shifts. I heard a four-year trend where it shifted to Hamilton. I'm just curious, is that because a number of students are growing in Hamilton? Have we seen a decline in overall students? How, what's the trend in that shift? A lower total population of students or one-time growing fast in the other?
The enrollment shift is specific to kids in town. We use a three-year average. And what we're seeing in the school district, and it's been pretty public, we've been trending downward overall for ten years. I've been here for ten years, we've seen that trend. We are starting to see an upward trend in our pre-K of five numbers, where we've had to add an extra classroom each year for the last few years. And it looks like we'll do the same thing for next year. So we're seeing that upward trend coming again from the elementary level that should carry into the secondary level. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I think we're ready to move to a vote. I'll just quickly go over the items that we're going to vote on. Two million, three seventy-eight, six ninety-nine for general town government. Three nine two one, six five five for public safety. Twenty-three million, eighty-nine thousand, four ninety-two for Hamilton Wenham Regional School District. Three hundred seven, four fifty-eight for Essex North Agricultural and Technical School District. Three seventy-one ninety-two for Health and Human Services. One one five seven, eight five nine for Culture and Recreation. And three seven four four, nine seven four for unclassified for a total of three seven, three oh one, three fifteen dollars. So we will go to a vote. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The eyes have it, the motion passes, and I so declare. Okay, before we move on to the next item, I'm informed that both State Senator Bruce Tar and our State Representative Kristin Kastner are here and would like to make a few brief remarks to us. We'll go alphabetically, so Representative Kastner.
Hello, I'm Kristin Kastner. I am a proud resident of Hamilton. I am your newly elected State Representative for the Second Essex District, which many of you remember as the Fourth Essex District. But we are now the second. The second is Hamilton, Ipswich, Rowley, Newbury, Georgetown, and Topsfield Precinct One, and not with Wenham, which is a little weird for all of us, but I'm now joined with my colleagues Rep. Kearns and Rep. Paracello, which now represent Wenham. I'm actually usually, we've been doing team efforts, so I'm usually up here with Senator Tar or doing around. So, and we've been working together, and it's, there are seven new reps in Essex County, and there's a bunch of veteran reps, and we are happy to be new, hear from all of you, meet all of you. Being a fifteen-year resident of Hamilton, I've met a lot of you personally, but certainly would like to meet more of you and represent this fine community. I have been the vice chair of the Master Plan Committee as well, which has been a wonderful effort and been involved in the Gordon Conwell Seminary discussions as well. And with that, we are working on the budget in the House. There's a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion about this fourteen percent increase in special ed costs, transportation for regional school districts. So we are hearing that, we are talking about it, we're talking about a bunch of other things. I spent my background in planning community development and certainly at a municipal level, and certainly understand the challenges that we all face with small budgets and trying to figure out how to diversify our economic options within our communities to make all of these numbers work for all of us, so we can really achieve what we want. And what I hope to do is really bring tools for people in our communities to be successful and continue to do that. And with that, I will hand it over to our Senator, Senator Tar. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Kastner. Senator Tar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and to you to the members of town meeting. I just want to say, Mr. Moderator, that Representative Kastner and I had rehearsed a duet for this morning, but unfortunately, we weren't able to do it together, but we'll save that for a future town meeting. And hopefully, that will continue to not prohibit you from coming to town meeting, hearing that news. But I just want to start out, first of all, by thanking everyone for coming out today to make critical decisions for the future of the town. I think congratulations are certainly in order for the school committee and Superintendent Tracy and the finance committee and the select board for the outstanding work that we just witnessed in being able to manage a lot of moving variables and produce a budget that is not only fiscally responsible, but also does return some dollars into stabilization and other things, and that is no small feat. You've heard mentioned a couple of times issues relative to the state budget, and I do think it's relevant to give you just a quick update on that. One of the things that's most significant in state government right now as we approach producing our budget for the coming fiscal year is that we continue to see incredible, incredibly robust tax revenue returns. And so we just passed a supplemental budget a few days ago, which does things like extend authorizations for remote meetings and notarization of documents and outdoor dining and cocktails to go. And even, believe it or not, I don't want to see everyone head for the door at once. But, but in addition to that, after accounting for the spending in that supplemental budget, we are still in the current fiscal year about six hundred million dollars in excess of what we had projected for our budget. So we continue to run a healthy surplus. April will be an important month. It is the most important tax month, and we'll see if that trend continues. Against that backdrop, Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll have presented us with their budget proposal for the coming fiscal year. And there are a couple of notable things in that. Number one, a question was raised about the state assistance for schools. And Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll have proposed a six-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollar increase in so-called Chapter Seventy, which Superintendent Tracy made reference to. And when you, when you run that through the formula, that yields about a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollar increase for Chapter Seventy for the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District, and that's not insignificant. In addition, I'm sure that Town Manager Demelwitz will be happy to know that our general unrestricted general government aid, which is the state aid that helps for all the other regular town expenses, would be increasing by a modest amount. I think it's about fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars. Now, one of the things that was referenced is the certainly surprise that came from the Operational Services Division that approved a fourteen percent increase in the tuition that is paid by local school districts for students that are outplaced into so-called Chapter Seven Sixty-Six approved schools. And as Superintendent Tracy mentioned, we are used to that increase being somewhat aligned with inflation, you know, somewhere between two, three percent in that area. But this fourteen percent increase was a surprise to, I think, just about everyone in state government. And so we are working in our budget proposals to be able to address that. The governor addresses it in her proposal by increasing the funding for the so-called Special Education Circuit Breaker, which helps cities and towns with the cost of those outplacements. The governor increases that. The governor increases that amount by some 14%, and $15 million of that is meant to help to account for this 14% increase that local school districts are dealing with. All of that being said, we are now in the process of doing our own budgets. Representative Kastner and her colleagues will take up the budget in April, and we will take up the budget in the Senate in May. And we hope to at least be able to continue to hold the numbers that I just recited to you in terms of increasing the things that have happened in the governor's budget, and maybe even address some other things as well. So we're very much in the midst of this. We certainly are seeing robust tax revenue, which should enable us to do some of the things that we would like to do, and maybe a little bit more. And the last thing that I would just bring up is something that we talk about a lot, and that is the issue of water. And we're very, very proud of the participation of this community in the North Shore Regional Water Resiliency Task Force. And there's been yeoman effort here, particularly by Town Administrator Demelwitz, and everyone in this community supporting the work of the task force. We are making great strides to be able to identify multiple solutions to be able to ensure that we have sustainable water supplies in the future, and that we do so without jeopardizing the health of the Ipswich River watershed and the aquifer. We have one project right now that's been bid and is out on the street in terms of analyzing interconnections, building on a study that was already done by the community with the Ipswich River Watershed Association. And we have two more to come, both of which hint at how we might get additional supply so that we can ensure that folks have the water that they need, and we protect the environment at the same time. That's just a little bit of an update. I'll take a breath after I'm done. Appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Moderator, to deliver that update. Appreciate being able to work with my new colleague in the House, and most of all, appreciate the honor of representing you in the Massachusetts State Senate.
Thank you, Senator Tar. Okay, our next item is Article 2-4, capital expenditures. I recognize Tom Myers.
There we go. Can you hear me? All right, morning, everyone. Bear with me, it's a long one. I move that the town vote to, number one, transfer the sum of $1,096,050 from free cash to fund the following purchases and projects identified in the fiscal year 2024 Capital Projects Plan, which is set forth in Appendix D of the 2023 Appendix Book. DPW sander, $215,000. Radio upgrade, $70,000. Fuel station, $395,000. DPW garage doors, $75,000. Library HVAC, $200,000. Library security, $13,050. HPD cruiser, $70,000. ECO cameras, $58,000. Number two, transfer $105,000 from Water Department retained earnings to purchase and equip a Water Department utility truck as set forth in Appendix D of the 2023 Appendix Book. Number three, appropriate the sum of $700,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of designing, constructing, and equipping the Water Phase 5 Implementation Project and Water Media Project, including all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said sum under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes of the town transfer therefore, with the expectation that said bonds or notes will be repaid from the Water Enterprise Fund, and further, that the Select Board is further authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out these projects, and vote hereunder. Is there a second?
Discussion, you have the floor, Mr. Myers. Or John Prelich of FinCom.
The approximately $1.5 million proposed in this article, there are 10 items being funded. Additional details for a lot of these are found in the FinCom commentary, but other than the water costs, the largest of these items are the fuel station, the DPW sander, and the library HVAC replacement. Regarding the fuel station, although efforts were made to create a new joint fueling station with Wenham, while we were temporarily sharing their facility during the past few years, ultimately, the two towns were not able to come up with a workable plan, and will now need to invest in a dedicated underground fuel station so that we can replace the underground fuel storage that was required to be taken offline a few years ago. Furthermore, the DPW sander and the library HVAC are both in clear need of replacement and are for vital services to the town. In addition, as Town Manager mentioned, $350,000 of this 1.5 million we've paid for by using the ARPA funds from the Rescue Plan Act. There are two qualifying projects, a larger-than-usual level of road repairs, and the Patent Park Master Plan Phase 1 improvements. Should be noted that after several months of diligently working to prioritize the marks competing projects and needs, the Town's Capital Committee recommended to the Town Manager that each of these items be funded this year. They put a lot of work into this, and their actions should be commended. FinCom unanimously agrees with this recommendation, as there's a clear need to spend on each of these items currently. Finally, we recommend using approximately $1.1 million of free cash for several of these items. Although this level of capital spending is historically high for the town, given recent budget surpluses from FY '22 due to higher-than-expected revenue and certain expenses not being incurred, we feel comfortable, this year only, with a level of free cash usage of this amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prelich. Any questions or comments?
Hi, Deb Safford on Maple Street. I just have a question. It's not about the money, but it's about the principle of the cameras. ECO, what does that stand for?
That's our Emergency Communications Operations Center, so that's where the dispatchers work, at the police station.
And it also says in other locations throughout Hamilton.
Is our police chief available?
Russ out there?
Russ?
In the back.
Sorry, I'm this morning. I'll get somebody to get that way, hold on.
Just raising the question about, you know, how cameras are used, and, you know, if it's about personal property, that's one thing, but if it's a surveillance thing, I just think we want to be, just have that be out in the open.
Russ?
Russ, we have a question about the ECO cameras. Police Minister.
I'm sorry I missed your question, it was out in the lobby, please.
On the ECO cameras for $58,000, it says, for security cameras in the ECO, which I understand is the emergency compound with the police and fire, which makes sense, and other locations throughout Hamilton. I'm just wondering what those other locations are.
So the camera systems are set up, we have cameras currently around the Public Safety Building and around Town Hall Building. We're also looking for liability reasons to put cameras down by the park, just in case someone falls, we can see those falls, for insurance reasons. We're insured by Maia, so we've been working with Maia on those. We do not plan on putting cameras downtown or in private areas, looking at private houses. These are all public areas, has nothing to do with private property or zoning in on private property.
So it's more for, if there's an incident, to be able to track it?
Exactly.
Where we're held liable as a town and a community?
As liable as a town. There will be no cameras set up anywhere other than on public property, and no cameras will be pointing in a view that would hone in on someone's private property. It's all, it's more to protect the town for liability and security reasons.
Great, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thanks for the question.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we can go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote, so. I won't reread all the items, but this is to authorize the capital items listed in Article Voting is now open. The affirmative has the requisite two-thirds vote in favor, so the motion passes, and I so declare. Article 2-5, Fire Engine Purchase. I recognize Caroline Bolu.
Good morning. The reason y'all are all here, the fire engine purchase. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $760,000 to purchase and equip a new fire truck, and that to meet this appropriation, transfer the sum of $114,569 from reserve bond sale premiums, and $645,431 from the Capital Stabilization Fund. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I think the biggest thing to note about this one is that it takes a couple of years for the trucks to be sort of made equipped and made available to us. So we're spending this money this year, but we probably won't see the truck for a couple of years, so it's a proactive move to make sure that we have the equipment we need in the timing that we need it, which will probably be by the time it's ready in two years.
Are there any questions or comments? This requires a two-thirds vote, since it's an appropriation from the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Give me one second.
Are you coming up to make a comment?
No.
Okay, we're ready to vote. The motion passes by the requisite two-thirds vote, and I so declare. Article 2-10, Stabilization Fund. I recognize David Wanger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good morning, all. Welcome to this extraordinary forum of self-governance. Thank you for being here. The motion is as follows: I move that the town transfer the sum of $57,541 from free cash to the Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wanger.
Thank you, sir. This transfer from free cash reserve fund, pardon me, to the General Stabilization Fund is pursuant to financial policies that FinCom and the Select Board have adopted, and in this case, the policy calls for 5% of the general fund operating budget to be put into the General Stabilization Fund. Currently, there's 4.9%. So we're reaching the 5% minimum threshold by this article. Both the free cash and the reserve funds, pardon me, in the General Stabilization Fund are in the nature of reserves for unseen fiscal needs. Movement, adoption from the free cash fund is by a simple majority. The General Stabilization Fund has a higher threshold approval vote from town meeting for the funds to be used, and that's two-thirds. And for that reason, this vote today to put money into that fund requires a two-thirds vote. There's no direct impact on the tax rate, and both FinCom and the Select Board unanimously reject this. Right, it is April 1st. Both boards unanimously recommend adoption of this. Thank you.
Moderator's the only one that's supposed to get a laugh, Mr. Wanger. I recognize Sean Farrell.
I'd just like to, there we go. I'd just like to take a brief second to recognize Mr. Wanger. He is leaving the Finance Advisory Committee, and he's really done a lot for the town over the years, and he's been involved on various boards and committees, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to David and all he's done for the town. And while I'm standing here with the mic, we'll give. And since I'm kind of commanding the mic here, I guess I'll have to say the same for Mr. Knudsen here next to me. He's leaving the Select Board, and I just want to say thank you to Jamie for all the work he's done for the town over his term as well.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, and thank you, Mr. Knudsen and Mr. Wanger. Are there any other questions or comments about this article? This requires a two-thirds vote, since it involves the Stabilization Fund. The article is to transfer $57,541 from free cash to the Stabilization Fund. The motion received the requisite two-thirds vote in favor. The motion passes, and I so declare. Article 2-13, Community Preservation School Athletic Fields. This and the following article are related, so we'll have the motion, it'll be a presentation and opportunity to discuss, but they are, they are related. So I recognize Jay Butler.
Jay Butler, 78 Old Cop Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I move that the town approve Article 2-13 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
One second.
As Bill just noted, let me just say a few words about the CPC grant request. This $800,000 request from the School Department is meant to lower the cost, or the town's cost, of the $50 million high school, middle school athletic field facilities project. You'll hear about that in a minute. This grant, per se, has been approved unanimously by the CPC, the Select Board, and the Finance and Advisory Committee. There are several conditions on this grant before it will take effect. First, the voters in Hamilton and Wenham will need to approve the debt exclusion article, which appears next. Also, both voters, both towns, will have to go to the polls next Thursday and vote for it there as well. In addition, Wenham will need to approve a $400,000 CPC grant request this afternoon. And finally, per CPC policy, construction must start within two years. And finally, we had asked the School Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hamilton-Wenham Recreation Department to define with the Hamilton-Wenham Recreation Department to define the general public and organized sports access to the facilities once built, and that has almost been completed at this time. This project has been discussed favorably and continuously for the entire 12 years I've been a member of the CPC. In 2016, we approved a $44,000 grant for this project, which was Hamilton's portion of the baseline engineering studies. Those baseline studies are still in vogue today as we speak. There are no other anticipated grant requests in competition for these funds, including those for Town Hall. And finally, from a personal perspective, I've been participating as a volunteer of the Athletic Facilities Improvement Committee since spring of 2020. This committee was formally reincarnated as a formal committee at that time and has been meeting continuously ever since. And I just want to say that I am very proud to have been supporting such an important project for our town. Thank you.
Superintendent Tracy, I recognize you have a presentation.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Good morning again. This morning, I'd like to talk a little bit about this project that will actually, I think comes up in the next slide, I represent, but you can switch to the next slide. All right, thank you. By the way, I thank you, Laurie, for dealing with our slide changes and everything else. Athletics in our district. Members of the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association and representatives of the Cape and League. We have 29 sports in three seasons for both boys and girls. Over 70% of our Hamilton-Wenham students participated in at least one sport. 92% of the teams earn academic, MIA academic distinction, and 100% earned sportsmanship awards in the last year. Also, in the last year, 83% of our teams qualified for state tournaments. Some statistics to go along with this. The athletic department at the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District is really that face that you see all the time. Could be considered the most visible. You drive by our schools, you get to see the brick fronts. You come to athletic events, no matter where they may be competing, and you'll see our kids at their finest, working hard. So really, one of the most visible points of our school district. We host up to a little over 265 events, changes each year, but on and around campus. We do use a couple of other fields around the community. And we have approximately 355 away athletics contests at both neutral sites, usually in tournament time and away. 74, again, 74% of our athletes participate, and 364 unique athletes out of the 450 kids at the high school. So why do we need to update and upgrade our facilities? Next slide. Thank you. The current fields are truly unmanageable. With the level of play we get for our own teams, for youth sports, they're often a rep. You can see the pictures behind me. Many of the pictures that you'll see today have been taken in October, which is a partial way through our fall seasons. So the level of play is basically unmanageable. And this is a reality of the time of year that we begin. We start sports in the fall, in August, football teams come out first, and then the other teams come. And we participate all the way through Thanksgiving. And then you have this kind of quiet period during the winter, everything moves indoors. And then on May 20th of this year, outdoors again for our spring sports, and we're right back out on the fields because there aren't other places for our kids to go. Our track, if you ask any of our runners, our track is really nearing its end of useful life. We have no turf whatsoever. We have no lights for our extended play, evening games, and we have no tennis courts, which is, I'll tell you, I'll show you in a minute, very unique. In the Cal League, the schools that we participate against, 11 of 12 have lights, 9 of 12 have turfs, and 10 of 12 have tennis courts. We have none of the above. Next slide. These are our back fields, way, way back if you've been there. This is what they look like in October, and as you can see, there's more dirt than grass and pretty compacted, pretty bumpy, pretty wild. Next slide, please. This is our main field, taken around the same time, mid-October. Football season is still going, competitions for soccer and tournament play is still going, and this field is primarily dirt. Next slide. The goals of this project are multi-layered. We want to bring our kids back to our campus. We have a number of our teams that go other places, including to other communities to participate in sports because we can't have them on our fields. We want to enhance the youth and community athletic experience. Talk to any youth coach, and at some point or another, when they are in an outdoor sport, they've been told, sorry, the fields are unplayable and not been able to have their games in the same place, which forces them to run around and find places to go. This project will also relieve tensions and pressures on some of the local fields and allow them the opportunity to be restructured. It addresses some of our NEASC critical school facility needs for accreditation. This would be foundational goal number six, learning environments. When you start to look at our learning environments, the athletic facilities, our fields, are included because we run health classes throughout the day, both for middle school and high school kids, and these are part of our classrooms, outdoor classrooms. As you might know, we have the oldest project adventure course right out back of the high school, started in 1970, 71, and we're still going, and our teachers still teach it, and we try to get our kids outside as much as possible. We're really working to bring students and families back to the district. In the conversations with people who have left the district, they do talk about a number of things, and one of them saying the facilities. Take a walk, ride down to Pingree, and just get out of your car and look around. It pulls you away. It's a beautiful campus. And also to build community pride and attract our families. These are opportunities for us to bring our communities together. And I've said this for two, actually, this is my third town meeting. Our intention in the school department is to continuously act to bring our community together, our youth sports, our local senior groups, and other members of the community to be able to have places to be outdoors and participate in events. It could be as simple as walking the track, or exciting as a pickleball game, or, you know, a Friday night football game. Major components of our project. This project is a fairly substantial project, and I understand that. The components include a synthetic main turf field. This is the field that you know, probably know of with the track around it. We're also behind that, intend to put in a multi-sport field. Both of those fields would have lights so that we could use them extended periods of time. You know, if you haven't had lights on your field, when I played football way back when, the coach would make us all get our cars and bring them to the side of the field, turn on the lights. Even very funny moments where the coach brought a glow-in-the-dark football one day. None of us could see it still. Synthetic softball field, also with lighting, which would benefit, again, our softball team, our youth teams across the district. And then relocating of field events. Because of the synthetic turf, you cannot throw a javelin in synthetic turf, so it basically turn our location of our throwing events like shot put, discus, javelin. ADA compliance. If you've come to graduation and tried to bring someone with a wheelchair to graduation, it is a feat. So we want to be able to continue to serve everyone in the community as best we can. And then an amenities building, which would bring bathrooms, much-needed bathrooms, to the site. And as part of that, I would probably foresee a place where kids would be selling hot dogs and drinks and things like that that is not where they are now. Next slide. This is an overview of the project, and really shows in detail each of the pieces of the project. There are, there's a segment that's outlined in red behind me that includes the main field, the track, and the multipurpose field, which has a baseball field in the middle of it. It's also known as a rectangle, which is a field that can be used for other sports like soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, and any outdoor events. That's surrounded in red, and that was approved by the Conservation Commission all the way back as far as, I think, 2015. It was re-approved, it's been re-approved. And then the most recent changes, we've added tennis courts. Those are outlined in blue, the softball field outlined in blue. And then the relocated field events, which would be back on the two fields that are still currently grass. Those tennis courts would be totally new for us and relocated just behind where the stands are for the main field. Those pieces of the puzzle up until about a week and a half ago were not permitted. We recently received at least a vote from Conservation Commission to approve those, but waiting for order of conditions, and that will come at some point in the future. So next slide, please. Why do we need tennis courts? Well, if you drive around town, you'll see some different options available. We do send our kids to various places to play tennis. One of the disadvantages we have is when we move to tournament play, our kids are not able to use some of our current sites, like the T House, Patton Park, because they don't meet the standards of required play for tournament play. So we end up having to go to other places, which forces us to rent buses and pay to rent courts at various surrounding communities, Ipswich and Manchester being two of the main ones. There's some pictures here, Patton Park, beautiful, did a great job resurfacing it. We can use it for some games, but it is a heck of a place to play pickleball. See it every day. And I think it's an important piece of it to note is that if you move to tournament play, that part, the nets are not at the right height. They lean in and dip in the middle, which, again, prohibits tournament play. Also, the back lines are too short for kids in tournament play. And then when you look at Pingree Park behind me, we've all maybe been there, it's probably being used better as a dog park right now because, why not? But these are some of the cracks. I wear a size 13 shoe, and it fits right in that crack, so one of the reasons we can't use that local facility. We are thankful that the T House does let us use their courts as much as we can. You may have seen yesterday, if you drove by, the girls were out there playing. With limited usage, we try to just keep moving kids around. Part of the tennis court issue is, too, that out of 450 kids at the high school, 70 kids have signed up to play tennis, and we don't have a tennis court. Fascinating to me, but that's the reality of where we're at with our kids and with our play. Next slide. So this project, this is the question I've answered for months and done a lot of research, done a lot of reading, sent out a lot of information, both, you know, positive, negative, perceived issues with crumb rubber infill. Many of the fields that you see that are installed today have crumb rubber infill. It is one of the cheapest infills, and the infill is the part that, if you look at, my fingers are blades of grass, it just fills in the middle to really keep the grass upright and also serves as an extra cushion when kids hit the ground. Crumb rubber is really the focus of the PFAS issue. When you start to see articles, studies, complaints, all tend to be around raising the issue of PFAS. And as you search online, I've spent far too much time reading articles, but it's also been fascinating reading to me to see what other communities are doing and what other ways people have attacked this problem. Crumb rubber has been associated with PFAS, there's nothing definitive. That's part of the problem we see with some of the information that we have. It might be, could be, maybe, but it's, there's no definitive issue, you know, saying, don't use it at all. There's no regulations, either federal or state, to say, use this or don't use that, so that doesn't help in the process. Crumb rubber also has been known to heat, superheat the field. So if you've been on turf, I've been on turf, and it gets hot, and crumb rubber is black ground-up tires, as you may know. The sun beats down on that, and heats that surface and radiates upward, increasing the heat on the field. It's probably the cheapest option out there, so a lot of communities just go with that, but not the best option. Next slide, please. There are a number of alternative infills. Several of them listed behind me are made out of some fascinating things. Walnut shells, cork, coconut shells, and ground pine trees. Brockville is one I've recently learned about. Town of Milbury has a field that they installed, they use Brockville. It is ground-up, sustainable, sustainably harvested pine trees. They grind them up, and they use that as the infill. There's cork and coconut mixes, the coconut shells and cork is ground-up, mixed together and added in. There's safe shells, walnut shells, you know, as we all worry in school about allergies, I'm not sure I'd go in that direction. There's also EPDM rubber. These are plastics, they're rubber that have been synthesized and created to be non-toxic. Envirofill, if you've been to Ipswich or Newburyport, they use Envirofill. One of the advantages of Envirofill is it's sand, basically coated with a non-toxic rubber. It also stays in the field. If you played on a crumb rubber field, it's probably at your house because it sticks to you and your children, it's in their cleats, their underwear, everywhere else. And, you know, you don't see that as much with some of these alternate infills, they really stay in place, which is also a long-term solution to having to add more along the way as you go. And then the TPEV, the TPE is really, again, another rubberized, it's a small rubber bead that is hollow, that has some flexibility and crush factor. The one thing I've learned is something like Brockville, if you go to their website, they are pushing really hard because their product reduces the heat by 30%, sometimes 40%. So that's an important thing to think about as we're looking at our athletes and the time they have on the field. There are currently requirements by the MIAA. They use, make us in the summertime, especially when sports begin in August, to use a wet ball reading, no higher than 85 degrees. People aren't aware of that, and we do have to do that before we start some of our activities to make sure that kids are in compliance, and certainly we give them water and everything else. Next slide. This is the slide everybody's interested in, right? $15 million, it's a big price. I understand that. I've had conversations with all of the boards, people in the community, we've done public presentations, I think that's the center of the conversation for many of the conversations I've had. As you learned earlier, the passing of the school budget, as there's a transfer that happened with the passing of that budget, 1.698 into the school stabilization fund. That fund, that amount of money, as I've said it, I think, three times today, probably 50 times before this, we intend to use that money to reduce this $15 million cost. Hamilton Preservation, which I'm up here speaking with Jay, $800,000 from Hamilton. If that gets approved today, that would further reduce the cost. As Jay said, it has to be in conjunction with Wenham. We made grant requests to both CPCs, and the split is the same as we do with the assessment, so it's approximately 66 to 34. So that, right there, is another 1.2 million reduction total in the total cost. And then, I don't know if my friends from the AFIC group, the HW AFIC group are here, but I'd like to, with the moderator's position, ask one of them just to report out on the fundraising event.
Yes, I'd love someone from the...
Call, Peter Gordo, Representative HW AFIC Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Peter Gordo, 416 Bridge Street. And I've been privileged the last couple of years to be working with a really dedicated group of individuals who want to see a real change in our athletic facilities. And so this morning, I'm very proud to announce that, as of yesterday, Hamilton-Wenham Athletic Facility Improvement Committee has received $1,277,567 in pledges and donations from 125 community members and local organizations. To raise almost $1.3 million in three to four months represents a remarkable accomplishment by a number of our community members who are committed to doing whatever it takes to ensure that our athletic facilities are safe and competitive. At the risk of overlooking someone, I want to recognize a number of folks who put their lives at stake in recent weeks and months, including Patrick... lives at home in recent weeks and months, including Patrick Ryan, Tina Mastrocola, Kelly Falde, Jen Daniels, Mugsy Assadorian, Kim Deedle, Kim Anderson, Kristen Loz, Kyle Tilly, Jay Butler, and Tim Fazio. I also want to thank the administration and the school committee, as well as the athletic director and the many coaches who worked closely over the years to refine this project. The Ed Fund and the CPCs of Hamilton-Wenham have also shown their support in a very significant way. In particular, however, I want to acknowledge that this effort has been led with determination, diplomacy, and a lot of elbow grease by Michelle Horgan. For the last three... For the last three years, Michelle has been the energy and the glue that drove the Field Project Volunteer Group. If you see her, please thank her, because her efforts to make our community better have been extraordinary. I believe that additional fundraising is realistic. We continue to have naming rights and other recognition available, which will be of interest to certain future donors. Also, we continue to seek grants and donations from individuals and foundations, and we have a number of those prospects who have not yet committed their support. We have heard the concern that fundraising efforts will be negatively impacted after this vote. While passage today may reduce some donors' incentive to give, we believe that others will come forth knowing that the project is finally a reality. For example, at least one significant prospect, a local financial institution with a history of funding field projects, has explicitly instructed us to reapply, quote, "Once substantial funding has been secured," unquote. We believe that this donor is not alone in wanting to see what the towns decide before committing their funds. Over the years, we've been blessed at the Hamilton-Wenham Regional Schools to have a very successful athletic program, both in terms of wins and losses, but more importantly in terms of participation. Approximately 70% of students play at least one sport. Athletics should not be viewed as a luxury. Athletics are, in my opinion, an integral component of a well-rounded education. The life lessons learned on the field, the concept of the whole being greater than the sum of the parts, teamwork, discipline, and sacrifice, are all learned traits that we know will serve our students well as they become adults. Employers often seek out ex-athletes for just this reason. I believe that in order to maintain the health of our athletic programs, we must find a way to improve the facilities. This proposal reflects an investment in the future well-being of our children. I urge you to support this spending.
I think it's important to note, as you saw this slide back in January, there were other figures on there related to the Patton Homestead Fund. The Patton Homestead Fund was put aside, basically, for fields, and that has been in an account with the Town of Hamilton since that point in time. It was originally a half a million dollars set aside with the idea that that half a million dollars should be matched by the Town of Wenham to release those funds. The Town of Wenham is unable to do that, their free cash situation is bleak at best, and so that money is still being held. I think the value of the money now is a little over $600,000, but I think it's important to note that, in my conversations with the town, that that money would still be used to offset the Hamilton's portion of any debt that may be incurred. Next slide, please. So, why do we want to do this? We want to do it for our kids, we want to, you know, respond to a study that was done, a really extensive study that was done in 2012, where nothing was done in our facility area. There were some opportunities to, excuse me, some suggestions to build other fields, playing fields in the community. Those did not come to fruition at the time. We want to avoid costly shutdowns and relocation. If you saw some of the signs around town, both of our girls' soccer team, who won the state championship, didn't get to play their tournament practices or their tournament games at a home site. We had to ship them off to a turf field in another community so that they could practice and play their home game for their tournament, something that, as you probably know, doesn't happen all the time. Same thing happened with our girls' tennis team, they went all the way, and we had to have them play at other places that cannot be considered home. So, we want to really focus on a home for our athletes. Not enough fields to rotate when grass is paused. People bring up to me, and, "Well, there's a number of communities that use grass and organic..." And the reality of that is, grass needs rest, grass needs time to grow, needs fertilization, et cetera. As I explained earlier, our seasons start in August and go right through beyond the growing season. When you're in the middle of a football soccer season, field hockey season, you can't grow grass, kids are running all over the fields. You know, one of the examples people keep bringing up to me is, "Hey, Marblehead does it." Well, if you Google Marblehead's website, their recreation website, their fields are currently closed, even though athletics started March 20th, like the rest of us. Their kids are practicing on their turf field, because the fields need to be paused to grow, they need to be held with nobody on them, you know, the likes of a lacrosse game or a soccer game or a football game will rip up a field fairly quickly. So, it's not really any place to rotate our teams, other than buying and, excuse me, renting facilities outside of our community, sometimes around our community. Gordon College has been a very good partner in renting us facilities when we need the opportunity. After installation of grass fields, you would install nice grass, organic fields, you can't use them for three seasons, that is the recommendation, it's two to three seasons, because the grass needs to grow, establish, and become readily maintained. We really want to stay close to our youth partners. The youth sports in this community are thriving, they are the heart of our community, and I think part of that is to give them the opportunity to have a place to call home as well. We want all of our children to have that opportunity to say, "This is my home, this is my home field." We want to bring the community together. I will say this over and over and over again, the school district is a vital and integral part of our communities. We want to work with our communities and work within our communities to make connections so that everybody can be part of what we do and who we are. When you look at it from the perspective of new tennis courts at the, you know, here behind the high school, what does that mean for the community? Well, there's an opportunity for community members to use it as well, and that is our intention. Jay talked about a MOU, and that explicitly outlines opportunities to be able to say, "Okay, we want people to use our track and our field when they're not being used by the high school or the youth kids." It really is a source of pride as well, I think it's an important piece of our community to be able to say, you know, to give our place to kids to call home, to give our kids a place to be kind of home-based when they're participating. And those connections really span all of that, the community pride, the community opportunity for our young kids to look up to our older athletes and say, "That's who I want to be, and that's what I want to do." And that's what we want them to do, to make healthy choices based on good mentors and role models across our communities. And I think it's just one of the bigger pieces for me is, and I will continue to say this as long as I am superintendent, our goal is to continue to find ways to make connections within this community, to bring us out of this COVID mess that we all suffered over the past few years, and be one family and function together as one, so that we can continue to serve all of our community to the best possible ability. And next slide. And we want our kids to be home. This is the home of the generals. This is our kids' home. We want to continue to do that, and I think this is an important opportunity for us to do that on behalf of our kids, and our community, and the future of our communities. Thank you.
Okay, okay, so, just, you know, as I noted, we're going to hear from the FinCon, as I noted, that this article and the following article are related, and there'll certainly be discussion allowed. I would anticipate that most of the discussion would come during the next, the discussion of the next article, but anyway. I recognize John Walsh, John McGrath. I'm Irish too, and I get it next time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thanks, everyone, for coming. The history of this project is 10 years old. The best part about this project right now is that Eric Tracy has got his hands on it, and he's managing it, and I want to give him incredible kudos for doing what he's doing. He has offered to answer every question, meet every time he's been requested to meet, join every committee meeting that he's been asked to join. He has become an expert, I think, Eric, you tell me if I'm wrong, in subjects that are also well beyond maybe what he might have expected to do. So, before I make any sort of financial comments, I wanted to raise that, because he's raised our game in town. So, this particular discussion is really of the CPC funding, and the FinCon 100% supports that funding source, without a doubt. So, that's all I wanted to say at this time. The broader question that we have gotten at the FinCon is, how much is it going to cost? And we feel we have an obligation to have that conversation, but not do it in a vacuum. So, we want to wait for the next article to expand that conversation. But there's multiple people who want to know what the answer to that question is, and as we progress here over the next bit of time, there's a piece of paper that you all should have picked up out front, that talks about capital spending, school and district-wide, and the town manager actually produced a document specifically for the fields to answer that how much question. So, we're going to do that broader conversation as part of the next article, but we do support the CPC funding, and we support the Fields Project as something we need to be for the town.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. So, we have moved and seconded to approve CPC funding. Are there any questions or comments regarding this article?
I recognize that this warrant specifically excludes the work associated with synthetic fields, but given that it's site prep and drainage work, given that the superintendent spent most of his time talking about that, I would allow me to address my biggest concern, which is synthetic turf fields. And I'd like to, I feel like I have an obligation to share some insights about this topic with you. Parent polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS, is, as the superintendent told us, a topic that's a little bit difficult to comprehend and get hard facts on. These compounds are tied to cancer, birth defects, thyroid, liver, and other immune system problems, but, oh, maybe what I should say, but this is not my opinion. I am in the water business, I'm the CEO of two water companies, one that owned and operated more than 150 drinking water and wastewater treatment plants in the US, Latin America, Asia, and the Caribbean. I've also served on the board of multiple chemical companies, including plastics and resin companies. So, this is not, I'm not just bringing this as a concerned citizen. The reason why we are now talking about PFAS is that only very, very recently have we been able to, and technology has been able to detect and quantify these, maybe 15,000 or so substances. These substances are measured in parts per trillion. Think of a liquid, a drop of liquid into an Olympic-sized pool, and out of these 15,000, technology today can detect and quantify maybe 50. Massachusetts regulates six out of these tens of thousands. You can't regulate something that can't be measured and quantified. I presume that the Yale associates' letter to the town, February 15, was in reaction to the Boston schools banning artificial turf in the fall. And I quote from the letter from Yale, "Please note that Yale is not an expert in toxicology and environmental sciences. PFAS levels in turf materials have been reported to be below published background concentrations of PFAS in natural soils and below risk-based EPA standards related to PFAS." That's probably true. The problem is that our understanding of PFAS is limited, and this is not limited to crumb rubber or not. This is by definition synthetic, these are all synthetic materials. And much of the historical data... Much of the historical analysis and our regulations are based on inadequate testing technology.
Sir, we have about a minute left. We've gone over the...
We cannot rely on information from the manufacturers of synthetic materials or synthetic turf. That's no better than relying on the nicotine or the tobacco companies or the asbestos companies. 3M, Sticky Notes, and Scotchgard have reformulated their Scotchgard. Reformulating is easy, that's how you get around these regulations. I think we have an obligation to follow those that are on the cutting edge and realizing that these are potentially introducing chemicals that will impact all of us and for many generations to come. And I would go as far as to say that we should consider banning synthetic turf in this
Any other questions or comments? If not, okay, man.
Second, 245 Sagamore Street.
Okay, you have three minutes.
I won't use them. I just wanted to point out that the reason the warrant article mentions that these funds, CPC funds, are not going to be used for artificial turf is because CPC funds by definition cannot be used for artificial turf. So, this motion is really quite separate from the artificial turf issue, and I want to second all of the concerns about artificial turf that were just identified, and we'll possibly have more to say about that after the next question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Please be at the microphone.
I'm flowers to Clark at Sagamore Street in Hamilton, and I'm going in my 83rd year in Hamilton. And I have to tell you, I've always been very proud of the representation that Hamilton has done in the community, in the towns, in the state, and quite frankly, we like to be leaders. One thing I've learned in life, if you want to be a leader in anything, you have to pay for it, it's pretty expensive. You have to be prepared to put up your money sometime and take your responsibility and deal with it. Now, 86% of our teams qualified for sports and activities last year, in the whole community here, should be 100. We should be out there leading the way. We've taken the example with our town hall, we've taken the example with the way our police force handles things, we take the example of the way the community participates. And I really and truly think, if you can do this right, handle it, you'll set the example that you want to have for a town that you live in and be proud of.
Any other questions or comments regarding this article, which is an article to approve $800,000 in CPC funding for the Fields Project? I think we're ready to a vote, we're ready for a vote. This article only requires a majority vote. This article only requires a majority vote. So voting is now open. Okay, the ayes have it. The motion passes and I so declare. Article 2-14, School Athletic Fields Project Approval of Borrowing. I recognize Caroline Bowler.
Can you hear me? Good. Want to talk about fire trucks some more?
Yeah.
No. I move that the town approve the debt authorized by the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee, School Committee, in the amount of $15 million for the purpose of designing, constructing, reconstructing, making improvements to and equipping the athletic and recreational facilities located at Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School, 775 Bay Road, Hamilton, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of the town at an election to, hold on, exclude from the limits imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2 the amounts needed to pay for the town's allocated share of the principal and interest on such debt, and further that the expenditure of funds authorized to be borrowed hereunder shall be reduced by any grants or gifts received for such purposes and by any amount or amounts that the school committee may from time to time appropriate from the District Capital Stabilization Fund, including but not limited to the $1,690,000 the school district has indicated will be earmarked for the project in FY '24. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I just briefly, I think, I think there's a lot of people in this room who have a lot of thoughts and feelings on this subject. But just to recap, the Select Board has voted 212 favorable action on the Fields. We are in support of us improving the athletic facilities at the school, but I think ultimately this is a decision that each individual in the town has to make based on the information that they have that's been presented by the, by the school here today. So we'll open the fourth discussion.
Okay, I think we'll hear from Mr. McGrath now.
Earlier I mentioned the FinCon has given a lot of thought to this. And our, our thought is go with a phased approach and consider a smaller project. That's what, where we came out on this. And we don't debate the need to do something for those fields. I've been back there two or three times. First, first visit recently was in October. I walked the Fields. We need to do something, no doubt about it. Our, we went back and read the Gail report starting in 2012. And three successive times, they presented plans back to the town for an eight- or 10-year phased approach. And we were so struck by that. This is a large amount of money, very significant. And I guess our thought is a go-slow approach is probably warranted. When you, when you do a phased approach, and I mean, I know many of the opponents don't want to hear this message, you know, what happens? You generally break a project up into pieces and you focus on that piece and you get it done and you execute it more, you know, more, in a more focused manner. You also do post-mortem reviews between each cycle and you, and you take learnings forward as you, as you do them. So that's sort of the go-fog approach. I focused on the Gail recommendation and I still think that holds and I still think it makes sense. The other question then becomes, why is it so big? Do we need to do all of it? I think every area behind the, behind the school needs to be addressed one way or the other. Our request as a, as a finance committee is to have a plan where we could actually do it in pieces. Five million, five million, five million, something to that. So that's what we mean when we say a phased approach. Does it really make sense? We think it should be at least considered and should be an option. So that's where the FinCon came out on that. Now, the numbers. The chart that I have up here basically puts this project sort of clearly in a context of what else is going on in town. All right. And we're at a very interesting point, at least I've lived here 40 years. We've never seen numbers like this before. But the responsibility that the FinCon has and the Select Board really has is to sort of show the taxpayers what's on the radar screen and what's coming. Couple of parties, the town finance manager and the FinCon basically said that this field will cost each taxpayer about 300 bucks a year. Could be higher, could be lower. And that's for 10 years. Okay? So I've been specifically asked that question in Carolyn's session last week. How much is it going to cost? 300 bucks a year for 10 years. So that's that specific question. More broadly, what else is on the radar screen? Probably in two years, Eric, we're going to be at a meeting like this and Eric's going to be asking us to approve spending on a new school, probably $100 million. I don't know what it is. I've used 85 million to 120 million dollars. Last October, when we, when we started talking about this, I urged everybody to go on to the state website. And the state website explains how they will partner with communities to build schools and then reimburse communities. So this picture that we've drawn is really, here's how much it's going to cost. These are best guess estimates. I think they're definitely within the range. The school, a new school will cost each taxpayer $1,000 extra every year for 30 years. Okay? So, and that's about as far as I wanted to pick the conversation. I make decisions, we all make decisions, financial decisions, but you should make it in the broader context of what else is happening, what else is coming, so you're just fully informed. And that's, that's all the FinCon is trying to do is to give you that perspective and to give you that information. Anyway, that's all I have. We're asking for a fully informed set of decisions, the financial reality you have at your disposal, and possibly some flexibility in how we actually deploy this, this field project. So that's all we had. Thanks very much.
Karyn Eric says a lot of folks have something to say about this matter. I think in order to make things a little more efficient, hopefully, if you can, if you're speaking in favor of the article, use this microphone to my left. And if you're speaking against it, microphone to the, to the right, my right, and I'll go back and forth and so everyone can get heard. If you just have a general question, you can pick either one. So, okay, I guess, Mr. Olson wants to speak.
Hi, Bill Olson, 419 Highland Street. I want to speak briefly because of the port to be that this passes today. But that's the great thing about this community, that we're all here today and thank you for all coming. We all get a vote, we all get a, you know, we all get to make a decision, we all get to make our own thoughts. But, you know, and I think as a lookout here, everyone probably lives or moved to Hamilton for a different reason. My family moved here, our family moved here 13 years ago. We moved here for our kids and to give our kids a better community. And I, but I think, you know, everybody, a different reason and I, but I think we have one thing in common, right? We want to live in a great community and want to continue to make our community greater every day. And to make greatness takes hard decisions, hard work, sacrifices. And every day we don't make our community greater, we make it less great, right? So, you know, what we're going to have to decide today is what, what that does. And so we've, we've been actively, you know, trying to make our community better in the 13 years we've lived here. And we've been to a lot of meetings where maybe things don't get voted favorably. And I hear a lot of people say afterwards, you know, I didn't really vote. No, I voted not yet. And that's not, doesn't help, it doesn't make our community better to vote not yet. We don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. We know we need to improve our fields, we know we need to do things for our kids, we know we need to make our community better. So I implore you today, you know, think about that, you know, we do not want to kick this can down the field, kick, kick the can down the road anymore. We want to, I, I implore you to vote yes. And instead of kicking the can down, you know, down the road, let our kids kick the ball down the field. So please vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to make just one request for clarification and also a request of the moderator to invite Kathy Herbl from Gail. She's, she's involved with the design of the project and to answer the phasing question. I think it's important for her to do that.
Okay, I'll...
Thank you. Just, just a question, John. What was the number you used for the, for the 250 to 300? Were you in the $7 million range? I think that's where we were at.
Just for the record, just please direct your calls, direct your comments through the moderator.
Yes.
You may answer.
Repeat the question? All we're looking for is just the, the actual number that was used because $15 million is not the share of Hamilton. I just want to make sure that, that actual number is out there. I know you used a range. I'm just hoping we can just put that number out there, how that number's would determine.
Six and 1/2 was what we did. Six and 1/2 and seven.
It was Hamilton's share.
Yeah, Hamilton's share. It just wasn't on there. I want people to understand that it's not the whole 15 million.
No, 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 absolutely not.
Thank you. Kathy?
Hi, my name's Kathy Herbl. I'm with Gail Associates. I'm the senior project manager overseeing the design and everything that we've been involved. I was not involved back in 2012, but what I can speak is we've, we've gone 10 years past 2012. Yes, our original master plan, like many of them do, do approach things in phases, but we've now lost 10 years. The facilities are deteriorating. Each year that you do put off each of the projects, you're talking, really the biggest costs associated with starting each of these projects over and over again is, one, you have to rebid everything. Two, you have to moab and demoab a contractor. That can range anywhere from $90,000 to $150,000 depending on which project piece we're taking. And also, obviously, like everything else, the prices are not going down. The prices are going up. We're seeing at least a 6% increase every year. And actually, this year, we're actually, we've had some bids come in on some of our other projects and we're seeing closer to 8%. So at this time, we feel it makes, you know, the most sense for the school to go for the whole thing and, you know, move it ahead and do it all at once. It'll, you know, disrupt, the whole disruption, everything will just be done. Thank you.
Okay. Just a final reminder, keep your remarks brief. You have a maximum of three minutes. Keep them respectful. And in addition to my, and please try not to be repetitive. So I'm sure that everybody will follow that, but in addition to my gavel. So, ma'am, we'll start with you.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Horton, 141 School Street. I'm a member of the Hamilton-Wenham Athletic Facilities Improvement Committee. I'd like to read a letter that was sent to Peter Guerdau, also a member, sent from Joanne Patton. Dear Peter, although I am resident of Derry, Connecticut, I was privileged for many years to have been a member of the Hamilton-Wenham community following my husband's retirement from the U.S. Army. During those years, I came to appreciate the enthusiasm and commitment that H.W. citizens always gave toward ensuring that the lives of young people growing up in your area had the education, sports activities, and programs that would lead them to achieving futures. That is why I am not surprised by the current initiative of today's Hamilton and Wenham citizens to update the facilities and programs that would ensure that next generations continue to benefit. The plan as proposed seems very sound and certainly should be supported if Hamilton and Wenham collaborate in the shared commitment to excellence that has been their hallmark. Although I cannot participate as a voter, I sincerely endorse this project and its goals and send your town's my confidence that their vision and action will continue to inspire. Always my best, most sincerely, Joanne Holbrook Patton. Thank you.
I think the objectives and goals...
Just identify.
Sorry, Jack Lawrence, 105 Rock Maple Avenue. I have no quarrel with any of the, the objectives and the goals that have been articulated by Superintendent Tracy. They're all good. Athletics are extremely important part of education, no question about any of that. I simply want to sound two notes of caution, which I only, which I only got from reading The Globe back in September. And it talked about the field in Charlestown, which was probably the basis for them stopping building any more synthetic turf fields in Boston. And they found on testing, appropriate testing, which they had not done on this field in Charlestown, which was built in 2007, that it did not comply with the cushioning requirements for synthetic fields. As you all know, cushioning is extremely important because of the deleterious effects it has on children's ankles, knees, hips, and also for concussions. So cushioning is extremely important. Cushioning is, is measured in Gmax units. The lower the figure, the better. And for synthetic fields, the Gmax number, maximum number is 165. This field in Charlestown was well over 200. And the reason mainly being that they had not done the appropriate maintenance on the field requires at least six times a year fluffing and, and work to, to get back that cushioning effect of, of the material in the field. This has been neglected. It, the, the element findings, because they pressed hard by a citizen of Boston to retest the field several times, and they are now going to have to renew that field. Remember, it was built in 2007. It's going to cost somewhere between 970,000 and a million dollars. I've heard the figure here that we would have to redo the fields probably every, what is it, 10 years or so? Correct me if I'm wrong. But I think if it's every 10 years and we have to pay 500,000 to a million, it's going to be somewhere between 50,000 and 100,000 a year that needs to be put aside for that critical maintenance to make sure that we're not doing real damage to our student athletes. And...
30 seconds, Mr. Lawrence.
All right. For perspective, a turf, a national turf field starts not at 165, but at 80. And a compacted field, which has not been properly watered, aerated, or taken care of, would get perhaps up to 100, 120. So the turf field has tremendous advantages in terms of shock absorption. I just want to leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Chloe Gern, 80 Rock Maple Avenue. So good morning, everyone. My name's Chloe Gern and I'm a senior at Hamilton-Wenham Regional High School. My first real introduction to high school was not in the classroom, but way back behind the school, out on the soccer fields. Months before I even stepped foot into the building, I was already part of a community of 50 something girls, meaning kids of all different ages. And coming in as a freshman, soccer gave me something to look forward to, making such a big transition a little less scary. In my past four years, being part of the soccer... In my past four years, being part of the soccer and tennis teams have shaped the person I am today. They got me through the transition into high school, through endless masks and Zoom calls during the pandemic, and through the constant ups and downs of junior year. Aside from the obvious importance to mental health, being a student athlete has taught me so much. I've learned the true meaning of teamwork, working to problem solve with others to achieve a common goal. I've applied analysis and strategy on the field and on the tennis courts and been able to translate those skills to the classroom with calculus or chemistry problems. I now know how to adapt, how to be flexible and creative when things aren't going my way, and how to persevere. Most importantly, through Hamilton Wenham Sports, I've learned to be a leader. Firsthand, I saw the importance of support and inclusion to make a team successful. I learned how to resolve conflicts and deal with problems on the fly and how to effectively communicate with others. I understand how to bring people with not much in common together around a shared goal and accomplish something powerful. These are life skills that apply to more than just tennis and soccer. I know how to lead in the classroom and clubs and in my own community. Being part of sports teams is essential to one's education because it teaches them how to become well-rounded teammates in person, setting them up for success not only in high school but in life. However, something so vital often seems to be neglected. I've been part of two state championship runs in soccer and tennis and did so without consistent access to a home field or any access to home courts. Additionally, for the past three years of my tennis experience, our teams had no home, drifting to the courts of different schools, tennis clubs, and colleges. We even won a state championship and closed off an undefeated season, yet we did not feel the support of our school community as a whole. Many did not even know that the success of the girls' and boys' tennis programs because of campus were extremely disconnected. Additionally, for the past three out of my four years participating in soccer, senior day has been rescheduled due to poor and dangerous field conditions, even being forced to host it at Gordon, depriving seniors of their last ever home game. Sports should increase school spirit and bring people together, but without proper facilities, it creates an environment where athletes feel disconnected from and unsupported by their community. Additionally, I firsthand seen countless season-ending injuries on the practice and stadium fields. Even having one of my closest friends sprain her ankle just days before the senior game because of a dangerous divot on the stadium field, which is almost to be in pristine condition. We needed new athletic facilities to strengthen individuals as well as our school community and to ensure the safety and success of student athletes in high school and beyond, thank you.
Kathy Simons, two forty-five Sagmo Street. Uh, we absolutely need to support student athletes, we also have to support citizenship, student citizenship, and our own by analyzing the questions before us in a really thoughtful way. This plan is a planned that predated all of the emerging information and the moratorium across... Sorry? This, this plan predates the emerging information about the risks to the environment, to student health, um, of PFOS, PFOs, and other, uh, metals that are contained in all materials that are part of artificial turf fields. We know that our current fields are in poor condition, we know they are not being maintained to the best standards possible. We don't know what could be done by putting more money into the maintenance of the natural turf fields and looking at rotation options. That study, that information has not been shared with us as a community. We're being asked to look at costs that are currently fifteen million dollars, but that underplays not only replacement cost, and it's not necessarily ten years, it could be six years, it could be eight years, it could be ten years, possibly more, depending on the use of the fields. And if the fields are used the way that this proposal is suggesting, basically for the entire community and rented out here and there, um, who knows how long they will need, uh, they will last and when they will need to be replaced. It also, the cost, FinCom has not mentioned the cost of disposal. There's currently, I, to my knowledge, I've asked this question, no legal mechanism for disposing of these toxic turf fields. We're going to have three of them, those disposal costs six years from now, who knows? How we're going to get rid of them? So, students need to think about the fact that your fields butt up against the wetlands, the fact that we're talking about introducing toxic chemicals and plastics that, um, whose, whose impact is currently poorly understood on aquatic life and on, and on our student athletes. Thank you very much.
Mia Flurry, seventeen Talleyo Drive, South Hamilton. Good morning, my name is Mia Flurry and I'm a senior at Hamilton Wenham Regional High School. As a former soccer, basketball, and lacrosse player at the high school, the majority of my days after school have not been spent at home, rather on the field or on the court with my teammates. Over the past four years, I've built connections and made memories with people from across the school that will last me a lifetime. Spending five to six days a week with one group of people brings you together in such an indescribable and unique way. Aside from the obvious benefits that athletics have on staying in shape, exercise has an immensely positive impact on mental health, especially in teenagers. For me and for so many other high schoolers, sports is an escape from reality. We don't have to worry about the stressors of school, drama, home life, et cetera. It produces anxiety and helps build self-esteem. The athletic community of Hamilton Wenham is overwhelmingly supportive, providing a safe space for us to express ourselves, grow, and have fun. However, it is hard to feel physically safe when you arrive to a field of mud on game day. Hearing from a coach that it wouldn't be safe for you to play today or to avoid that side of the field that's too torn up is discouraging and a red flag in itself. During the fall and spring, we always have to keep in the back of our minds to avoid the puddles, holes, and bumps that cover large portions of our stadium and backfields, rather than focusing on playing to the best of our abilities. The amount of season-ending injuries that I've experienced and witnessed, caused in part by the poor conditions of our fields, is concerning and disheartening. I can acknowledge that sometimes injuries just happen. The circumstances may be out of our control in many ways, however, something that we can control is the safety and conditions of the fields we play on to help limit the risk of injury and support our athletes. High school sports have taught me so many meaningful life skills, such as how to be a good leader, how to set goals and achieve them, the importance of working together as a team, perseverance when times are tough, and that failure is not always a bad thing, is something that we can learn and grow from. I hope that all future athletes at Hamilton Wenham will be given the opportunity to play at their own school and feel the love, support, and sense of belonging that an experience like this provides. I believe that the opportunity that we are faced with here today to improve the high school athletic facilities is something that will only prove to enhance the abilities and potential of the strong programs that we have and will continue to benefit the lives of student athletes for years to come. Thank you.
Harry Phillips, four forty-eight Bay Road. Um, I'm, to clarify, I'm speaking today in my individual capacity and not as a member of FinCom. I move to amend Article twenty-two three slash four, two slash fourteen by striking out fifteen million dollars and inserting ten million dollars.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, okay, there's been an amendment made, uh, we'll now discuss the amendment. So, please, uh, at this point, uh, just, we'll be just, be discussing the amendment, so Mr. Phillips?
Sure, I'll keep my remarks short, um, as I have evaluated this project, two things have become clear. One, the town should and needs to invest in updating the fields. Two, fifteen million dollars is simply too much to spend as we look at our future investments. What this amendment does is lower the total amount of the field project from fifteen million dollars to ten million dollars. This will reduce the amount of debt that Hamilton needs to pay by approximately three point three million dollars, reducing the tax impact on a median loan, uh, from approximately three hundred to a hundred and forty-seven dollars a year. Over the ten-year term of this bond, this amendment will reduce what the median taxpayer pays by approximately one point five thousand. I encourage support of this amendment as a compromise option that allows significant field improvements while cutting the tax impact in half.
Thank you, sir, and we're, and now we're discussing the amendment. Okay.
Hi, Dana Alara, seventy Yacka Cove Road, I am also the chair of the Hamilton Wenham School Committee. To speak to the amendment, um, the project in place, or the project presented, um, is a project in its entirety. It's been, as you've heard, over ten years, um, we've been looking to this and this project's been well thought out, uh, thought out. If it were to be, um, amended, um, we would need, not necessarily all of the field, we wouldn't be providing the fields that we've just outlined that we needed. We don't know exactly how the, that would transpire to cut down a project that has already been fully planned and presented. It, I urge the community that this has been, uh, Mr. Tracy has given numerous public presentations on this specific project. The Athletic Fields Improvement Committee has worked on this specific project. I urge the community not to accept this amendment and instead to move towards a vote, an up or down vote, on this project, which a school committee, a school district, school community has brought forward today. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding the amendment?
Peter Gordo, four sixteen Bridge Street. I would, I think I have a caution that should this amendment pass, uh, the fundraising committee would feel obliged to revisit the project with our major donors because what we have, what they've made their gift, the assumption that they made their gift on was the whole scope. If we're cutting the scope by a third, that may cause some of them to reconsider their gift. Second, uh, the CPC's grant was contingent upon an MOU with the rep department and this meeting the needs of the, uh, youth sports organizations in town who are, you know, a huge piece of who we're trying to serve here. And if, again, if we cut the scope of this, I don't know how it impacts that, so just two precautions.
Jonathan Lamb, one twenty-five Blueberry Lane, friends and family call me Bo. My kids call me Dad. And before I came here today, my daughter, eleven years old, said, "Dad, keep it simple." And in light of that, um, I moved here with my wife fourteen years ago to Blueberry Lane, to Hamilton. And in those fourteen years, we have paid our taxes, most of those fourteen years. Not quite all, but it is April first. As a taxpayer, as a coach, as a dad, and in the spirit of keeping this simple, we need to keep this momentum going here today, there's been too much work done on this to go revisit the wheel and complicate things. Let's keep this going, let's vote for the full fifteen million. So it's a yes note, I guess a no to the, the motion to amend and a yes on the full project, thank you.
We're discussing the amendment, ma'am?
Tip Safran, Maple Street, I just have a question, I think the amendment is just addressing, if I'm not wrong, that we've already taken out the CPA funding, which was already approved, the, um, excess in taxes that was collected and put into this fund, the one point six million, the fundraising, which has been great, um, sort of showing then that it's ten million on this slide here. So isn't adjusting it to ten million just reflecting that the money that's been raised is going to reduce that? Because the concern is, if we still vote at fifteen and we have that extra money there, it's not necessarily going to reduce what we end up borrowing, what if inflation goes up, which we know it is, right? Look at the cost of eggs, it's going to definitely be more than this. So is that extra money that's been raised just creating a buffer so that it's going to actually cost maybe twenty million because we're going to raise fifteen and that? So I'm just wondering whether this amendment just addresses what's on the board, which is what's already been raised, is reducing the cost. It's not changing the project, although I wish it was, because I think a phased approach is better, doing part of it, um, to address the other issues going involved, but it just seems like the ten million is up there.
Mr. Tracy, do you want to address that?
I will do my best. If the amendment is to drop the, the cost down to ten million dollars, my assumption is that the person who made the amendment was, uh, anticipating that the gifts that have already been, uh, set in place would further reduce that ten million, reducing the overall, uh, ask. So, for example, uh, fifteen million minus the offsets that, that I've showed earlier, would now change to ten million minus the offsets that I showed earlier. And, um, I think specifically, I don't, I don't think that's going to work for the, for the major projects. I just want to make that clear, that, uh, the numbers being cited are, assuming ten million dollar max, minus whatever monies we've could set aside today with, with our votes, uh, would bring it down even further. So the money on the Hamilton side, that we were talking between six and a half and seven million dollars, would be approximately half that. The reality is, it wouldn't get us to the project, so that's all I need to say, thank you.
You have something to add, Mr. Phillips?
I just want to confirm that Mr. Tracy's understanding of the intent of the amendment is correct.
Thank you, any other questions regarding the amendment?
On the amendment. Anastasia, two two seven Highland Street, lots of tall people here, I'm the vice chair of the Hamilton Wenham School Committee. My objection to the amendment is that by cutting the scope of the project undefined, it begs the questions, which of our student athletes are not going to have the necessary improvements? Part of the reason the scope is what it is, is it addresses all of the teams, all of the fields, all of the needs in one street. One of my major reasons for supporting this project is Title IX. Those of you who know me know that I'm an aggressive feminist and I've made no apologies for that. Our fields were configured in nineteen sixty-two, ten years before Title IX was even conceived of. Some of the athletes that will benefit most by executing the fifteen million dollar totality of the project are our girl athletes. Right now, our softball team plays at Cutler Field and the middle school. These are facilities that have no bleachers, no dugouts, no bathrooms, no parking, no spectator seats. Our varsity field hockey and girls' lacrosse, but not boys' lacrosse, of note, play on the overgrown septic field called Fairhaven Field behind the library. So part of the reason that we need to execute the full scope now is to provide equity to all of our athletes, football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, tennis, track, javelin. If we reduce the scope, as has been suggested, we are going to be forced to choose which of our athletes are less worthy of our support, and I am absolutely unwilling to do that. I would encourage those who support the fields project to vote no on the amendment and vote yes on the proposed project. Thank you.
Any other questions on the amendment, sir? Okay, you have... Oh, listen, I didn't, I didn't hear it. There's been a, I'm going to let this gentleman speak because he was at the microphone.
No, it's not, it regards to the amendment, sir.
Okay, could you hold off till we, wherever we go? Thank you. Appreciate your indulgence. Uh, any other questions regarding the amendment? Questions or comments? So, um, this, there, there's an amendment on the floor to reduce the amount under the warrant article from fifteen million to ten million. Uh, the amendment, uh, is a, requires a majority vote. So, um, we're now, if, we're now ready to vote on an amendment to the main motion to reduce the amount on the warrant article from fifteen million dollars to ten million. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed.
Can we call the vote for the motion over? Yeah.
Hi, everybody, my name is Lulubek, Pine Tree Drive. Am I out of order again?
Just, 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 just for one sec, we, we appreciate the eagerness. So the, the vote on the amendment failed, um, I so declare. So we are now back to the main motion, which is, um, fifteen million. So, uh, further questions or discussion about the, the motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be quick. This is a nerve-wracking way to spend a Saturday, I'll talk in front of you, I'll tell you that. I draw from the Brady Bunch and when Marsha was going for her driver's license test, she was encouraged to envision the... was encouraged to envision the instructor in his underwear.
Jesse, you're into your three minutes.
I've got this timed out. I'm good. So I appreciate those of you who chose to wear your best britches. The, the issue here about money, I think, is really diminished by the fact that a third of it's really already been raised. And then we're dividing the balance between the two coolest towns in, in all of Massachusetts. This is, this is actually, quite frankly, small potatoes, though I do respect the actual quantity of dollars there, okay? This, we can do this. I, I point not to the issues of, you know, harmful toxins or budgets, but just what we're talking about here, my, my son, we are not the, the front-running athletic family. My son is probably among the town's worst baseball players, okay? And, and he knows that and we're proud. And here's the point, he still comes back every year because of the story I'm about to tell you. Last year, Babe Ruth, he hit a game-winning hit against the town's best pitcher, a boy whose name you'll all know. And for 45 seconds, and I'll get pucker-lipped here, he was carried by his teammates, okay? And they were freaking out like hyenas, screaming his name that time, maybe never before. And I will draw on that opportunity where his game-winning hit in an impossible situation, I will use that for so many things in raising him. These moments are not highlights, they're not wins, they're not losses. They are sharpening stones, sometimes winning, sometimes losing for us to raise our kids. And I don't want to get into that Lynn Fields got better fields than us, or, you know, Manchester, but folks, it's shameful. So skipping over that, it's time for us to make our arenas worthy of that moment so that we as parents and community members can raise citizens with little sharpening stones. And it does matter. And like Mr. Wilson said, you know, the land is the where. Well, for this, the sports fields are the where.
My name is Anne Giroux and I live at 821 Bay Road. I, I agree that we need to improve those fields and improve the experience of our athletes. And that's a very, very important thing for the town. I do have some concerns about the chemicals, the toxic chemicals. So I have one question and one comment. The question is, we heard some good things today about an organic infill. The chrome rubber infill is, is really bad. It has all kinds of heavy metals in it, toxic chemicals, et cetera. So my question is, is whether the school district is willing to commit to using some kind of organic infill rather than chrome rubber? I think that's an important issue and it would be helpful to get an answer to that today. And my, my comment is, if people are concerned about chemicals, the PFAS chemicals are not in the infill. The PFAS chemicals are in the, the green blades. And I've done a lot of research online. I'm not a scientist, not a water quality expert, but my understanding is that there are no artificial turf fields today that are free of PFAS. So I think we need to understand that going in, that if we get an artificial turf field, there will be PFAS, your children will be playing on a field, they'll be getting exposed to the PFAS. The PFAS are, they're called forever chemicals, and that's because they don't break down. They're very toxic, they build up in the environment, they build up in our bodies. And if people want their kids to be playing on that, that's fine, it's a democracy, we're going to vote on it today. But I think people need to be aware of that. So with that, I'd just like to go back to the question I had asked about the infill.
Okay. Mr. Tracy?
Thank you. I, I do want to say, I think I said in my presentation, now I'm thinking back, did I not say it? Chrome rubber was featured in my presentation because it, we're really avoiding it. We, we don't intend to use chrome rubber. And that's why I listed all the other options that were non-toxic and organic. So we have a building committee that is a separate group of people who are in the, the trades that will review all the options and, and bring forward the best option. We also don't have the conditions yet for the second part of the approval for Conservation Commission, so there may be something in there related to the conditions, but we, we do plan to not use chrome rubber on any of our synthetic fields.
I know, I'm sure, this is the right angle to actually hear me. I'm Amy Wallace, I live at 17 Postgate Road. A lot of what I was going to say was addressed in the last couple of pieces. I am a scientist, I work at a membrane manufacturing company, fully recognize PFAS is a huge issue. But it sounds like we're taking the necessary steps to look at it. And as a community, I think that's a whole separate issue than the entire field component. There's so many places you get exposed. With this, I think just paying attention to those risk factors, understanding what they are, and it sounds like the committee is doing it. So I'm really glad to see this going forward. I have two elementary student athletes who are so excited about it, I know they have planned, but they don't want to break their ankles.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the main motion? I'm sensing a ground swell. Okay. The motion is to approve bonding of 15 million dollar amount. This requires, because this will go on the ballot, there will be a ballot vote next Thursday, but this requires a two-thirds vote in favor of the article. So with that said, voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The article received the required two-thirds vote. The article passes and I so declare. And just, as again, there is a, I'll make, I'll make other mention of it, but there is a ballot vote next Thursday. So, okay, well, let's, moving on my audience, we'll take a couple of minutes break for anyone that needs to. We do have some other exciting warrant articles coming up, so I want everyone to... I think you're right. I'm not sure, I, I don't want to go beyond just urging people to stay. No television, but as I go, I hope. I appreciate you. Well, somebody, someone formally asked, asked... Folks, if you'd take your seats, we'll keep things moving. Two more articles. Okay. If they could be way up down, please. Thank you. Okay. Article 3-1, General Bylaws Amendment to Conservation Bylaw. I recognize Tom Myers.
Can you hear me? Great. All right. Thanks for sticking around for the main event. I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 17 of the town's general bylaws, conservation, by deleting the current version of the Chapter 17 in its entirety and replacing it with a version shown in the handout entitled 32223 Final Proposed Conservation Bylaw Revision, Town of Hamilton, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk's office. Do I have a second?
Is there a second? Mr. Myers?
Mr. Moderator, may you recognize Lauren Lynch from the Conservation Commission?
Sure. Ms. Lynch? If you want, you can, if you just speak, you can use the, the AMI, if it's easier.
No? Yes? Great. Thank you all for staying and thank you for the members of the select board. My name is Lauren Lynch, I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission. I just want to give a brief overview of the CONCOM's proposed revisions to the Hamilton Conservation Bylaw. The Hamilton Conservation Commission is responsible for protecting the town of Hamilton's wetland resources. It does this by working with residents to comply with the State Conservation Commission Act, the State Wetlands Protection Act, and, important for today's conversation, the Town of Hamilton's Non-Zoning Conservation Bylaw, which contains additional requirements deemed necessary by town residents to protect our local wetlands' resources and the values they provide to our community. In February 2022, Town Council made the commission aware that our current conservation bylaw is missing key links to components of the conservation bylaw regulations. Thus, Town Council recommended that the commission update the bylaw so that current practices outlined in the regulations, which have guided the commission for many years, be appropriately codified into the legal framework of the bylaw. At its core, the revision that we are proposing today seeks primarily to fix administrative and structural issues with the current bylaw. The proposed revisions will also bring Hamilton's Conservation Bylaw into closer alignment with current best practice as outlined by the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. To ensure that the proposed changes reflect the interests of Hamilton residents, for the past year, the Hamilton Conservation Commission has engaged with the public in a rigorous, open discussion and review process. To give you a very brief overview of this, between February and September of last year, we shared our initial proposed bylaw revisions with the Select Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, FINCOM, DPW, local wetland scientists, and the general public. In October of last year, the revision was tabled at the special town meeting, after which the commission discussed the concerns that were raised at length and revised the proposed bylaw language to address these concerns, most notably by removing the revised definition of intermittent streams. Since January of this year, we have held multiple public meetings to discuss the bylaw, have received written feedback from residents and legal representatives of residents, and have integrated all of this into what you see here before you, a copy of which, as Tom mentioned, was distributed at this meeting. I'll end my remarks there. Thank you.
Did you have a second? Mr. Olson?
Bill Olson, 419 Highland Street. I have two questions that have been asked recently, just wanted her to comment on them. One, first question was, does this bylaw change affect the turf field project we just voted on? Will it have any impact on it?
No.
Secondly, does this new bylaw impact the Conservation Commission's ability to enforce or access private property?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Questions or comments regarding? Mr. Johnson?
Mark Johnson, 6 Patton Drive. So the Conservation Commission has had many, many meetings, a lot of outreach. However, the bylaw that they've been advancing since October has hardly changed at all. So they had the necessary meetings and some of the concepts evolved. And I actually am very in favor of a lot of things in the bylaws that they're changing because our old bylaw really needs to be changed and they've done a great job on many things. However, in the course of doing this, they have taken things from regulations and put them into the bylaw themselves. They've basically codified themselves into a box. They're not giving themselves the flexibility to deal with your properties and everybody else's properties. They've sort of, by making everything regulations, on one hand, they say, hey, everything's great because now we have limits. On the other hand, they've sort of taken away all their own flexibility. They have also gone through and, they are now the sole determinant of a lot of issues, whether or not you have, need to have an engineer, whether or not you have a new type of engineer. There's, there's no concept in this bylaw of them having reasonable conditions. We're even just saying that they're going to work with you. They, they have the absolute right. Now, we have a really good Conservation Commission right now. The people on, the members on the board are really great, their hearts are in the right spot, they're all professionals, it's all great. My concern is the next board and the board after that and the board after that. Now, we had about 20 years of history in this town where we had a Conservation Commission that was well ahead of everybody else, ahead of the state. And they, they used their authority at the time as a bludgeon to stop development, stop all sorts of things. I'm not worried about this commission right now. They're really good. What I'm really worried about is the commission changes, we've just given them an amazing amount of power. And we should moderate that power by just putting reasonable in a dozen places, that would offset half the things I, I care about. But really, I, I, I think they need to just look at it a bit more. So I think a little bit of codifying will help it. So anyway, that's, that's my point. Please take it.
Thank you. Sir?
Oh, up there. Thank you very much. I'm so sorry. This will only be, this will be very brief.
Could you identify yourself, please?
John Warner, 260 Chabaco Road. I'm sure we're all aware of the dwindling forests, farmlands, and environmental issues that affect us all. Not only are we compromised by the forces of nature, but also by the mistakes of human development that have caused major threats and unforeseen catastrophes and unfortunately cannot be undone or remedied. The good news is that we can learn, we can be proactive and do something about it. Seeking to protect natural resources is not about shutting down or eliminating development, but making it smarter, making it better and more accountable. We are abundantly blessed to live in this idyllic town. Let us make informed choices by our actions and vote for the new town bylaws so thoughtfully presented by our Conservation Commission. After all, the lifestyle and health you protect may, and not may, write that, will be your own and your children's. Thank you for listening respectfully.
Thank you.
John Raymond, 62 Gardner Street. I have a concern on a couple of the items in the definitions. Item 11, definition of stream. It makes no differentiation as to flowing waters along the sides of roads. As I was coming here, I noticed that lots of flowing waters, both on pavement and in dirt as gutters. So I'm wondering if this is overly broad for our definition, for, not necessarily now, but as the gentleman before me, you know, Conservation Commission's down the road. Also, item 12, varnished pools. Item D, I'm wondering if it should be worded as they continuously hold water for a minimum of two consecutive months. Again, it appears to be overly broad. Thank you.
Someone from the CONCOM want to address those issues?
I would just clarify that the definitions mentioned of stream and vernal pools are aligned with current scientific understanding and best practice.
Thank you. Sir?
Tom Ford, Bay Road. Many of you know me as a subprovider and developer. I am concerned about this bylaw and its revisions. What this is, is a giant transfer of property rights, you know, in addition to a bylaw that I think is already well ahead of the state statute. I think if there are people in the audience that think it doesn't matter to me because I don't have any weapons on my property, you're absolutely wrong. Go across the street, go to your neighbor's yacht, go to the restaurant on the right and the left and behind you. If any of those people have a vernal pool, the cost of adding a bay to your garage is going to go to twenty thousand dollars in permits. And the point that was made previously about this Conservation Commission is thoughtful and judicious, that it's not always the case. It's been my experience as a developer that you get a lot of people on volunteer commissions that are single purpose minded, and I think everybody in this room will be strongly affected and financially influenced should this bylaw get passed.
Thank you. Sir?
Can I respond to that? Just briefly, the, the claim that this bylaw would, would increase costs to residents. To be clear, in our discussions with Town Council, there are no changes to the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, to the powers, or processes that the Conservation Commission currently follows, will follow via these changes. This is simply an administrative change to the commission's bylaw and regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you. Rick Mitchell, thirty-six Rock Maple Ave, and member of the Planning Board. I, I have some serious reservations about the current version of this bylaw. Some, some of the sections in here are really arbitrary and capricious, and give the Conservation Commission some unfettered powers that could do some serious damage to landowners in this town. And I think the discussion, and I'll give you an example, I think the discussion about the turf fields was an excellent one, and there's this controversy about Picas and all the potential environmental impacts that we don't know yet, but may discover later on. And I want to read one section of this bylaw to illustrate my point. It says, under project evaluation, any, that they can deny a permit based on any loss, degradation of resource areas elsewhere, elsewhere in the community, resulting from past activities, whether permitted, whether they were under permit, whether they were unpermitted, whether they were exempt from permitting, or foreseeable future activities. They can deny a permit. In other words, you can have a project on Sagamore, and they could say, well, we've determined that the activities at the high school turf fields, now that we have more information, potentially are degrading those wetlands. We're not going to let you do this project at your house. That's an incredible expansion of arbitrary and discretionary power that has ramifications that we can't even quantify, because as people have said, and I think Mark did it well, as well, there, others, this Conservation Commission is operating under goodwill. They're doing a great job. I thank them for this. But we don't know what future members are going to look like, and we've seen this happen time and time again. I'll give you an example. With the cell tower downtown, we had three members of the Planning Board who decided they were going to ignore our local zoning and federal law, and voted against granting the cell tower, even when they were told by Town Council face-to-face, if you vote against this and it's appealed, you will lose. The town lost over five hundred thousand dollars in revenue and spent amounts of, immense amounts of legal costs-
Thirty seconds.
...overdo that. So, I'm just saying, I think this is not ready yet for prime time. I think it needs to go back and eliminate some of these arbitrary and capricious authority that these people will have in the future. Thank you.
Could I respond to the comment on arbitrariness? Just to be clear, a core reason that the commission believes it is critical to update our bylaw is that the core body of our current conservation bylaw was last updated in the nineteen eighties. It is very out of date, and it is not aligned with best practice. The current structure of the new bylaw, which admittedly makes it a longer bylaw, is aligned with best practice from the state, the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions, and is in line with the structure of the Conservation Bylaws that guide many of our local neighborhood communities. Thank you.
Ashley Glady Chase, two fifty-four Bridge Street. Apologies, I'm losing my voice. You answered very simply no when asked about the turf field project, if this would impact it. I'm wondering if you could just expand on that a little bit more, because it seems like there are a number of things in here, like drainage, and fill, and wetlands, that this might actually have an impact.
Sure, yeah. The turf field project was brought before the Conservation Commission in Q1 of this year, and the commission has already issued its approval of the permit. So, were this bylaw to be enacted at this time, voted in, it would not affect a previously voted upon permit. Thank you.
Something new, Mr. Johnson?
Yes. So, I'd like Lauren's interpretation of a paragraph that she took. One of the changes from the back of the bylaw moved to the, to the front, where the commission shall take into account any loss, degradation elsewhere in the town-
The microphone.
There we go. Okay. So, I'd like Lauren's take on the language that the commission shall take into account- Any loss, degradation, isolation elsewhere in the town of Hamilton- Okay. So, the, the point is simply that the commission shall take into account topics that are elsewhere in the town of Hamilton, and that watershed from past activities, whether permitted or unpermitted, permitted or exempt, and foreseeable future activities. That is pretty broad. If the zoning board wanted that authority, we would deny them that. If the Planning Board wanted that authority, we would deny them that. So, why should the Conservation Commission be allowed to make its decision on any particular project based on things that are elsewhere, whether they were in the past or foreseeable future? And it doesn't even define whether foreseeable is the next year, next month, the next eighteen months, next ten years, or what. So, it just seems a massively large increase that is, that maybe is not necessary. Maybe we just strike that paragraph?
Sure, yeah. That shift was made in response to feedback received from, to the commission on our March sixteenth last meeting. Just to be clear, in the current bylaw, there is already language around the commission taking into, taking into consideration cumulative impacts of projects. So, that language that Mark just outlined references cumulative impacts of projects across space and time. And we see, not uncommonly, projects come before the commission where maybe a large swath of land has been subdivided into small pieces. We work on projects and looking at the impacts of projects as they affect our community as a whole. Natural resources are deeply interconnected, and it is critical for the commission to understand how projects interrelate to one another.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, sorry. Just one question. Bill Wilson, thirty-six Holland Street. I'm just curious. You said turf field is grandfathered. That's great. Would it have passed if brought forward during this new change? And if so, you know, by rejecting it now, is that going to impact other, other permitting around that area because of the turf field now?
I can't speak definitively to the counterfactual or potential, but what I will say, again, to be clear, this current bylaw revision that is before you simply integrates the commission's current processes within its current regulations into our bylaw. It is not a substantive change to the commission's power processes. So, my personal answer to that would be no. We would not be able to change the decision that was made based on any changes to the bylaw. The substance is not significantly changing. It is an administrative change and a codification of critical legal language into the bylaw.
Okay, any other further questions?
John Cole, sixty-six Chabaco Road. And I spent a lot of time working with the Conservation Commission over this. On the other side of what a lot of people are saying, you know, I find it almost too, it's not restrictive enough. And you get into the issue of conditions in section G, there's escape valve for everything. So, when everybody keeps talking about, oh, but restricted, restricted, there's, there's, there's so many escape valves in this thing that you can go back to the commission and say, no, this, you know, we, we need less setback. We have to do this. And it, that, that there's no, there's a, there's an escape valve. There's a way to get around all the rules and regulations, the way that's written, unless I got there wrong.
I think you've had enough bites at the apple.
It's dead. Oh, hi. I just want to clarify, and to the point that the gentleman just made, it is the understanding of the board that it is administrative in nature, but it does increase the legally enforceable scope of jurisdiction for the CONCOM, which is those loopholes previously could not be legally enforced by the CONCOM. By closing the gap between the regulation and the bylaw, we are factually increasing the legally enforceable jurisdiction of the CONCOM. I want to be clear about that, because what the gentleman just said is true. Right now, there are gray areas that create that flexibility. When you close that gap, it does factually increase the legally enforceable jurisdiction of the CONCOM. That is true, correct?
Yes. I would say, had ten years ago, applicant to the commission filed a suit, it is possible that that CONCOM could have been sued because it was not a legally tight bylaw and regulations package.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I think we're ready for a vote. This requires just a majority vote. So, Article three dash one. No, yeah, I'll, I'll get to it. Just, we're voting to replace our current conservation bylaw with the revised bylaws. So, voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The article received a majority vote in favor. So, the article passes. I so declare. Okay, article, last article. Article three dash three, citizens petition conservation restriction on parcels south area of Patton Gift. George Tar is the opponent. Is he here?
Thank you. Is this on? I move to see if the town will vote to ask the Select Board to create a conservation restriction on nineteen acres total, more or less, on three adjacent town-owned parcels at the southern end of the Patton Gift 2012. The conservancy, parcel number twenty-seven six, six thirty-two Asbury Street, nine point zero nine acres. Patton Wells, parcel number twenty-seven one, zero Asbury Street, three point nine acres. And the southern, western most portion of what is commonly referred to as the Patton Homestead, parcel nineteen one, six fifty Asbury Street, approximately six point zero acres, the northern boundary of which to be determined by surveys, CMAP, and appendix I.
Is there a second? Mr. Tar?
The, the three contiguous town-owned parcels to be included in this conservation restriction are parts of one continuous ecosystem. It borders and fills in with critical upland large sections of the Ipswich River marsh, all protected by Greenbelt. The boundaries between these parcels are invisible on the ground. The property lines are shown in the map. Despite the commonalities, each parcel requires a separate explanation. First, the conservancy. As required by the special permit for the cluster housing of Patton Ridge, nine point one acres of open space, all upland, was set aside and conveyed to the care and control of the Conservation Commission. The commission was not consulted beforehand, had no experience or indeed interest in managing such upland. As you know, the commission is entirely occupied with administering the Wetlands Protection Act and its derivatives. For the last seven years, the commission has not taken any care of this open space of forest and fields. It deserves better. The second parcel consists of the remaining wild open space in the southwestern portion of the Patton Homestead. Given the Conservation Commission's dedication to wetlands, it was puzzling that the most prominent wetland on the Patton Gift was not included in the conservancy, namely, the canoe launch. This is a cone of marsh reaching to the Ipswich River and is in fact Hamilton's only direct access to that river. Eventually, the commission concluded that the canoe launch was left open for possible commercialization. If you doubt that, read the commentary on the homestead at the end of the warrant. For the last four years, the commission has tried to acquire some degree of control over the canoe launch, and also the pond, the only wetland entirely on the Patton Gift. Managing the brush adjacent to the pond and south flow would enhance the homestead and, along with the rest of the CR, relieve the town of some management expenses. A third wetland on this parcel is a vernal pool identified last year by the kids of the Kestrel Educational Adventures. Efforts to have the Select Board grant the commission authority to manage and improve this roughly six acres of wetland, forest, and fields have been unsuccessful. A conservation restriction would require far stronger and needed protection. The third parcel, Patton Wells, is not part of the Patton Gift. The well was capped in 2013 and will never be used again. Its most important feature is the Wood Road, marked on the map, and the main public access to the entire area. Starting at Asbury Street across from Greenbelt's Vineyard Hill, the road slopes down to the Well House, where there is a small parking area, and then onward into the Oak Beach Forest of the conservancy. The road passes an observation platform built in 2017 by Greenbelt, which affords a wonderful panoramic view of the marsh. Further on, the Wood Road passes the canoe launch, turns north into a field with a large beach where the Patton Homestead begins. With the pond on the right, the Wood Road splits. Straight ahead lies the Great Lawn. Turning left, reenters the forest, passes the vernal pool, but then proceeds north to Green Meadows, now owned by Greenbelt. A conservation restriction is a long-running state program to protect open space. There are many CRs at Hamilton with tax breaks, so FINCOM should know all about them. But they're confused. They want details about the CR, which is not my job to write. This is a request for the Select Board and the grantee to write one. Also, FINCOM thinks I should have designated that grantee, but that too is up to the Select Board, although FINCOM should be able to figure out the logical choice from what I've said. They also contend that there is nothing here in need of protection. I hope I convinced you otherwise. As for the Select Board, I've indicated their motion in opposing this petition. One other thing, at that March sixth meeting, after voting not to recommend this petition, they decided to rewrite my brief summary appearing on page thirteen in order to support their position. That action was, shall we say, problematic. Here is my original and accurate version. The CR will secure the many open space of forest, meadow, and wetland contiguous with conserved properties on the east, south, and west for conservation, education, and passive recreation. The CR will not compromise the Great Lawn or the operation of Patton Homestead. So, to protect this open space with this wonderful variety of fauna and flora to encourage educational opportunities, and to ensure continued public access, access known for the future, I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tar. Any questions or comments? Do the Select Board and the Finance Committee want to be heard?
Bill Wilson, four nineteen Highland Street. Yes, the Select Board overwhelmingly- Yes, the select board overwhelmingly recommended unfavorable action, which means if the select board recommends you vote no on this article. And the reason is, is because this is town-owned land that we're still trying to figure out how to operate. And so to create further restrictions on town-owned property does not need to work favorably with our future plan. So for the gentleman to say it does not affect operations would not be a true statement because we're still figuring out how to operate the property successfully. And so we recommend voting no on further restricting town-owned property that is already protected by existing regulations.
Thank you. Finance committee want to be heard?
I'd like to, can you be?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. First here, finance committee. Okay, well, Mr. Johnson was at the microphone first, so.
Has the Conservation Commission taken a position on this article? Is there a reason why the Conservation Commission has not taken a vote on this article? Because this was something the Conservation Commission was thinking about, or it was promulgated and it just kept getting pushed down, and now it's back. So for what Bill said, it's a bad idea at the moment. It's not a bad future idea. The town has taken 10 years to figure out what to do with the Patton Homestead. We had all sorts of battles between previous select and previous FinCom members, all having different ideas, do we sell it, do we not sell it? What do we do? Why do we buy it? Why do we accept it as a gift? The town is in a really great shape now. The FinCom came up on board, looked at the economics, really understood what's happening there. The select board took the feedback from the FinCom and has a really hard step on the throat of the town to say, hey, come up with a plan and work it well. They finally have organized how they're going to manage it by taking the director of the homestead and moving her into the recreation budget and sort of streamlining a lot of costs there.
Approaching the four corners.
The reason being is the town has finally gotten control of the property and finally knows what it wants to do. And so having restrictions put in place now would be exactly the wrong time relative to the decade that it took us to get right here. If the town ever considers selling the property or doing something else with the property, then at that time, that would be a perfectly good reason to consider, do we want to bind this property to protect the things that we think need to be protected? But I would argue that at this moment in time, it is the wrong time for this conservation restriction.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Virginia Cookson, 318 Forest Street. I am on the Conservation Commission and am most likely the only one in the commission that remembers most what Mark was talking about. So the federal commission hasn't got the background of the history to be able to decide on making a support or a non-support. I, of course, don't have that expertise. The commission was left with a 9.1 acre of conservancy land around the Patton Ridge condominiums to take care of. We were given this without talking to us, never talking to the commission, or it just happened to town me and vote. They said, also, we don't have any money for you. If you want money, well, you could go for a grant. Sounds great to me, I'd like to get a grant. A grant usually takes a lot of work. None of us have that type of experience. Okay, enough of that. Later, we found that with the 9.1 acres, one of the things people like to do is to walk all the way around and come back to where you started, not walk three quarters of the way, turn around and come back. So we tried to work with the Patton Homestead, Inc., to have a memorandum of understanding, I guess, not understanding, beginning with an A, anyways. And it was quite long and involved, and I was getting to what I thought it was actually going to take place because town owns the lands, so the memorandum had to be between the homestead and the select board, not with the Conservation Commission.
You're approaching the four corners as well.
So what we wanted to do is get permission to cross, go across the land where, on Asbury Road side, where the driveway comes down from the ridge and then get around to where the park now is now and back to where the farm pond is. And that's the area that we wanted to have control of because it would allow us to go all the way around and we could also help in resurrecting that farm going to be a beautiful educational place for children and as well as being able to look at nicely by others. The reason I think this suggestion, not proposal-
You have issued three minutes.
Just, I believe we should think about it because it also involves greenbelt. I believe it connects with greenbelt. Greenbelt makes sense to use what is already there. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the petition is to direct the select board to put conservation restrictions on certain parcels that have been described in the motion. So this just requires a majority vote. Voting is now open. Voting is now closed. The mayors have it, the warrant article fails, and I so declare. Okay, that concludes our business today. But remember, we do have a- Yeah, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And don't forget to vote on Thursday. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the rec department.